Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, July 17th. In this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in Council Chambers, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm presiding. Also present are Council President Deb Rule, Councilors Joe Espiro, via Zoom, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility as Presiding Officer, I am to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as Sergeant of Arms. At this evening's meeting, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn. If everyone please rise, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to just note that we will be scheduling hearings over the course of the next six weeks or so to take public testimony, specifically on August 21st on the budget and city fees. This evening, council will be basically receiving the budget, the public effectively receiving it, reviewing the big book and looking at the projects. We'll have some updates on the projects from city staff. We're not going to take public comment on those items this evening, but certainly want to get all the public input we can get on the budget. So after tonight, certainly engage with your elected officials. Council members engage with the public, get lots of feedback, thoughts, comments, and we will again take, take public and council comments at that public hearing on the 21st. So thanks for that. Jumping into a couple of brief updates before we introduce Mr. Baker. You know, one, I think everyone's aware and we'll celebrate it in due course, but great work Chief Kuhn on the identification of a suspect in the arson. Just tremendous work. Thanks to your crew and all those out there protecting us. Moving on, Jason Welker will mention it, but in the audience tonight in the light blue shirt back there, Bill Dean, our new senior planner, welcome Bill. Bill comes to us with over 20 years of planning experience. He was the city superstar in his former city. I'll just read a quote here. Bill is known for his smile and positive attitude. Those who work closest with Mr. Dean also know him as a capable leader, clear communicator and manager. One of the things he was managing in his former city in Tracy, California was a general plan. So that's their comp plan. You know, working through that whole adoption and he's very familiar with many of the challenges we're facing here. I could not be more thrilled to have Bill and now Radica on board in our planning department. And I want to just call out Darren Fluke in the green shirt back there. Darren has been our contract planner numerous times in the last few years. And thanks to Darren and Jacobs, the firm he works for, for leaning in and supporting us so well during this, this time period when we've been absent without a planner. So thanks so much. Just a couple of other updates for me before we get staff updates. The Durro Patcher, you might have heard or seen, it's arrived. As I mentioned, it's now out working. This week, the crews did Pine Street. Now, keep in mind they're learning how to use this machinery for the first time. So there will be a learning curve, but if you've seen Pine, that big five inch by four inch seam that it peeled apart has been filled. Initially, it gets filled and there's a lot of rock. They go back in and sweep that. But that is a pretty robust, better than filling a pothole with a shovel, right? So it's a very robust, almost like an epoxy fix that I want to just emphasize that it is a Band-Aid. It will not address our pavement condition. And it does prolong the life of what we have. And on that note, as is referenced in the executive summary of the budget, I plan to address pavement conditions throughout the city holistically by asking the council to support a 1% local option tax on retail sales this fall. Currently, staff is doing some analysis on our pavement condition. We have a spreadsheet with every foot of pavement graded in the city. Holly is working on some budget estimates of what it will take to bring our, our city streets up to average national conditions. That will in part direct us on what kind of revenues and the duration of this local option tax. But I bring that up to you because the language, if we are able to secure council support to move forward, is due to the county September 6th. So we will be bringing that assessment for council discussion and public discussion recommendations, probably August 7th to the council for a full analysis, staff presentation, and soliciting your feedback and hopefully support of that. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. Water and sewer, I'm really pleased the governor's representatives have reached out along with Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Regional Director and the Congressional delegation. They've requested come up on a tour on the 24th of the wastewater plant. So I'm just thrilled that they, this was them reaching out to us. So they, they clearly read the press and know that it's a pressing concern for, for us in the community. So excited about that. With that, just a couple more quick ones. We do have some street closures. Check the city website. But Thursday and Friday, Olive between Erie and Highway 2 will be closed doing some utility work. The street should be opened back up before the weekend. We try to post all of that stuff on the Facebook page and the city webpage as soon as we're aware that's coming down. With that, I guess I'd like to open it up quickly for staff reports. Any staff feel ambitious enough to jump up here first? And then we'll go into council announcements and then to Mr. Baker. Thanks, Brent.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. Cheryl Hughes, Central Services Director. So the update for the Central Services Department, we'll start with special events. The farmer's market, of course, every Wednesday evening and Saturdays from nine to one at Farm and Park. We have the cottage market that are, that takes place on Sundays from 10 to four at Farm and Park. And we have the festival, the first concert is set for Thursday, July 25th, so next Thursday. And the last concert is Sunday, August 4th. And so for more information on the concerts, you can go on to the festival@sandpoint.com website. And that, that gets us through the next couple of weeks of permitted special events. For HR, we have some things happening there. The deputy city clerk position after recruitment was filled internally through the recruitment process. Haley Keys, who is the previous administrative assistant for Central Services, is now going to be filling that role and she's right here.
Already in training.
She's in training. And so, and we will be posting that replacement position very soon. We also are currently, we have candidates in a few areas that are moving forward through the hiring process. That is our utility locator, our parks and building maintenance worker, and our wastewater treatment plant operator with a focus on pre-treatment. So all of those have candidates and they're going through background and, and all the hiring process there. So hopefully those positions will be filled very soon. The Public Works Director is, we are doing first round interviews on three candidates tomorrow. There's three candidates. And that's taking place tomorrow. And then from there, they'll, they'll move on to second interviews or final interviews. But that process is starting. So that's, that's exciting.
Cheryl, can I just interrupt you for a second? If there are any council members who would like to participate in that, obviously not all of you, but if, you know, one of you or whoever would like to sit in on that, please. Deb, would you like to, if the schedule allows?
Yeah, I can do that. Mr. Mayor, we'll have to talk about timeframes.
Great. They'll do a first round and then maybe the second round when it's narrowed down.
And I'll make, I'll make note of that so that you're added to that invite for the next round. And then we have interviews scheduled for two candidates for the grants, contract and procurement specialist position. So that'll be good. Hopefully we can get that position filled soon. And other current recruitments, we just released for a patrol officer for PD and an accounting specialist for AP. Going into the grants, contracts and procurement division, we are working through negotiations with Keller Associates for the wastewater treatment plant preliminary engineering report. After the solicitation process and interviews that were held with the top two highest scoring firms, we are hoping to have an agreement for council consideration at the August 7th meeting. Upcoming solicitations will be an EV charging station, RFP, a recreation software, snow hauling services for this next winter season. Sorry, we do have to talk about snow in the summer. And we are going to be soliciting for city facility HVAC maintenance and repairs. That contract's coming up for renewal. We submitted an application in coordination with Heather Upton, the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Officer for the Idaho Historical Society, $2,500 grant that can assist in funding brochures for the historic walking tours. So that application's been submitted. And that concludes the staff reports for Central Services. Any questions?
I would just add before council questions, that EV charging station is going to be for replacement and new management at Jeff Jones and down at the city RV park. So we'll hopefully get some operators who have an enhanced charging system because we get a lot of concerns and complaints about the existing ones. Details to follow. Pam?
I just wondered, did we lose a patrol officer or did we need another one?
This is replacement.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions for Cheryl? Thanks so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Community Planning Development Director Welker.
Good evening, council. I'll be very brief tonight. We've got a lot on the agenda. First, the mayor introduced Bill Dean. I second everything he said. Bill's been awesome to work with these first three days. He got thrown right in with a couple of public hearings last night at Planning and Zoning. So I can tell already it's going to be exciting to work with him on our comp plan, implementation of, of comp plan code updates in the next year and longer. I've got a couple of other updates for you. Today, we kicked off the Ponderay Paw Patrol at City Beach with seven licensed and, and screened dog handlers and their lovely pups. The Community Resource Officers joined us down there today, Officer Wright and Captain Bailey was down there as well. So we, we had a really great kickoff. When I arrived to meet all of the volunteers, there were about 15 geese at the south end in the grassy area. But by the time we went through our whole orientation, went through rules and expectations and walked over with the dogs, the, the geese had already figured out that it wasn't safe to be there. And there were a couple hundred yards out in the lake. So probably starting tonight and maybe as early as 4:30 tomorrow morning, we're going to start seeing a volunteer dog handlers, hopefully scaring our geese away for good, at least during this peak season. Just rest assured, we went through lots of rules and expectations through this program. It's very, it's been very strictly monitored and controlled. Every dog has a high visibility vest and a patch with the dog number on it. And every handler has a permit, a high visibility vest, permit with the QR code. So interested people can scan it and find out more about the program. It's, it's going really well in the first day and I look forward to getting some feedback. Let's see, we have the skate park expansion at Traverse Park is nearing completion. I think about a week from now it's going to be done and we plan to have hopefully a little grand opening ceremony on July 28th, which is a Sunday. The reason we're doing it that day is that's also a volunteer opportunity at Traverse Park. And I'd invite any council members to join us at 9:00 AM. We're going to be doing some landscaping around the skate park and around the Bicycle Skills Park to the north to kind of beautify some of those areas. We've, we've got the Cedar Hills Church in Ponderay is rallying about 14 volunteers to join our Parks Maintenance Crew and myself and Maeve, we're going to be volunteering that day as well. So nine o'clock on Sunday, the 28th, that's Cedar Hills, a huge community volunteer day. So we're lucky to have a crew from there. And that's all I have. Yes.
Did you put signs up at the beach?
We have temporary signs that go on A-frame, these like collapsible A-frame ones. So when a handler shows up, they have to go grab that from the, the city shop. We're not taking down all the no dog signs because it's still a dog free park.
Pam, can, it sounds like, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. It was in my way. I couldn't see anybody. Awesome.
Yeah. And we all, we've also ordered and we'll be installing the new signs at the Traverse Centennial paved pathway to allow for on-leash dogs on the paved pathway. That ordinance, I think, has been in effect since July 1st, but we haven't updated the signs yet. Those signs are.
Okay, the signs were important to me because the other morning when I was down there early, there were three people with dogs on leashes walked right by the signs.
There are actually 36 no dog signs in each park right now.
It's well signed.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Just one question, can, is it still open to apply for the Paw Patrol?
We're, we're allowing up to 12 participants for this year. So we currently have seven. So we are looking for up to five more participants, but we are going to cap it at 12 this year. And there is, there is a screening process. You have to go get a behavior evaluation with a professional dog trainer. She signs off and application comes back to me for final approval. So yeah, if you know anybody who's interested, we have five more spots.
Tremendous. I love it. People came with a problem and a solution. That's the best.
And the Daily Bee was there today documenting it. So there's probably going to be a story tomorrow.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
Who else would like to give an update? Chief Kuhn, man of the hour.
The, we'll answer the first question as employment. So Brooke, who was working on getting certified with us as a full-time officer, she did, she was making more money at her other job and so she attended her resignation. So she's no longer with us. It's been posted. ISIS got it posted today. We've already had one inquiry from a lateral, which is fantastic. Usually doesn't happen that fast for us. So hopefully that's some, some good news where we can get a lateral officer that comes in that does it quicker. So.
When you say lateral, that's from another agency?
Another agency, someone who's certified. For us, that's a plus because we don't have to do as much training with them. So that's, that's fantastic. Apologize. I usually try to get you guys some numbers before the second meeting, which I've been a little busy, so we haven't got that done. I'll get that out to you guys this week, to the council this week. We had about 485 calls for service last month. If you look, look back to the prior year, there's about 150 calls difference. And I was wondering why we're lower this month. 911 phone calls has been, historically has been horrible for us. Last year, we actually had like 145 911 phone calls in the month of June. This month, we had like 30 some. So there, I don't know if the phone companies are doing a better job, if the citizens are doing a better job of not hitting the, the 911 button. So you'll see a drastic change in the month. One of the big factors is because of that. So, which was good to see. Met with the downtown businesses last week, just, and this will hit our Facebook hopefully this week. Just a couple of reminders, ride your, if you have wheels and you're on first and cedar and you're on the sidewalk, you need to pick them up, you need to carry them. It is against city code to be on any type of wheel apparatus on first and cedar, unless you're, there's some disabilities involved with that. The city crews are going to come back around. There's some paint markings at the intersections. They're going to freshen up those paint markings where their feet. We're getting some flyers put together where we're going around to some of the local businesses that sell bikes, skateboards, et cetera, just to give them. So if they're renting them or if they're selling them, just to try to help remember, remind our public that our downtown's a little chaotic with vehicles. Our sidewalks are tiny. Be respectful. Get off, push your bicycles, carry your skateboards. Do some of those things. Summer's here. If you didn't notice, dogs in cars is always a hot topic at this time of the year. We'll put a reminder out again on Facebook, but if you have animals, leave them at home. Don't take them to town with you. If, don't put them in your car. If, if that happens, more than likely we were, we will be called. Animal control will assess it if they fit the, the, a critical time for that dog, which they have a list of. We, we will remove those dogs from those vehicles and make them safe. So just it's, we love our animals. We love our pets. We want to take them with us. But there's sometimes we just need to leave, leave them at home. As everybody's aware, July 4th, the Army circus burned to the ground. Our, our staff has done a fantastic job of stepping up, working late hours, trying to resolve that case. As everybody knows, there was an arrest made yesterday. It's in the courts. There's still investigation to take place. One of the, part of the reminders on Facebook was if you, if you know her, if you associated with her, if you have any information that could help us in the investigation continue, don't be afraid to give us a call, talk with us. It may, it may be a, maybe important, it may not. We've had several phone calls from the public. I appreciate those phone calls. Some of the information we already have, some of it's new, but it helps kind of paint a picture of, of what's happening and what's going on. So I appreciate the public support with that.
People do that anonymously?
Absolutely. They can call me. My phone number's all over Facebook. If you don't have it, just call the police department, ask for Chief Kuhn. You can talk to me. We'll take, we'll take your tips anonymous. You can also call in the, the arson number and leave it anonymous through them too. So that's kind of the, just a short rundown for us. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council President.
Two things. Do you think, I believe it's the new 988 suicide general number is making a difference in the calls that we get? I noticed recently it's been in the news a lot. So.
We have seen a few more calls come in from that, from that organization instead of coming in. It's probably really too early for us to say it's making a big difference in our call volume. Because if they're really in crisis, we're still getting called to assist them. So those numbers would call us and then we would go assist.
That'll be interesting.
Crisis. So I'll be curious to see on the, on the low level crises, how much can they mediate before we get there?
And then the other thing for, I'd like to point out to a lot of people that I know that Teslas do have a dog mode and you can leave the air conditioning on and leave your dog in the car. So don't break those windows until you check in. And I'm sure there are a lot of other cars that are of a certain quality, shall we say, that are electric now that may have dog modes in them. So just so the public is aware of that.
No, that's actually a fantastic reminder from them. So in law enforcement, it's called, we have all the, the temperature gauges and the, the training. So there are some vehicles that do it and we, a majority of the time when we get there, we do not take the dogs, even though the public may think they're in crisis, the dog's in danger, they're really not. So there are times.
Question, Councilwoman Duquette?
I was told that at one point you could register your bicycle with, was it the police or the city? Are you still doing that?
Yeah. If you have a bicycle that you want to register in case it gets stolen, you can call the police department to give us your bike and description, your show number. We'll go ahead and log that under your name. So if it gets stolen, it's in our system.
Okay, awesome.
They can, you can do it via email. At one point it was on our Facebook, it was on our city website. I'm not sure if it's still there. Melissa's nodding yes. So it's still there. So if they go to the city website, there is a form that they can fill out that will push to us.
And where on the city website? Under police and the police? Okay, thanks. I don't do mine.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say a quick thank you to yourself and Officer Chamberlain for coming out to speak to the shopping district. It was extremely informative, very resourceful, and we'd love to take you up on the offer to meet a little bit more regularly as well too. So thank you for that.
No, absolutely. It was, it was a fantastic visit and one we're going to do more.
Anyone else? Thanks so much to you for all the hard work. Passa, congratulations along to your team. Great work. Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. How's everybody doing today? Yeah, just, I just want to kind of just go back over the July 4th. Started out the day with a parade. Everything went fine. Mayor said, I'm paraphrasing, geez, I hope you guys have a quiet 4th. Yeah. Well, it was, you know, sitting there watching the fireworks, absolutely gorgeous. And then, you know, looked at my wife and said, yeah, this is, how does this get any better? And then tones drop. So what I want to do is I had talked briefly with the Daily Bee and I talked a little bit with one of the reporters from the Reader, but I just want to go through some of the agencies that were there that night and that really helped out. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank Sandpoint Fire, the Bee and Seashift crews. They actually changed crews out at the fire scene the next morning. Selkirk Fire, Northside, Sam Owen, Schweitzer Fire, Bonner County EMS. The Timberlake Fire, because they actually came into the city and provided coverage throughout the night until we got them relieved the next morning. Sandpoint Police for their quick response, obviously helping with traffic and bystander control. I'd like to thank Chet and his crew for mobilizing. They had a backhoe out there and also a front loader trying to help us get to seed some of the deep seeded fires in the middle of that building. I did not get the names of the operators. I wish I did. There was a few of those guys out there. I'm also thanking Rob Utilities Crew for, you know, basically keeping us with all the water that we needed. So that's, that's pretty much it for that fire. It was, we got there pretty quick. The crews were basically staged downtown for the fireworks shoot. So their response time was very, I'd say it was within less than three minutes. But that fire had gotten into that attic and once it got in that attic, it was, it was pretty, pretty much over. So we don't really have anything else to report. Been having a lot going on since that. I just, another shout out to Chief Kuhn and his crews, his officers for being able to, to get that, that suspect into custody that fast. That usually doesn't happen. So they did a fantastic job on that. So that's, that's pretty much all we have for this week.
And Chief, it's on the agenda, number eight. I want to just say congratulations to everyone involved. The collective bargaining agreement for the fire department, thank you. Councilman Howarth and Chief to the fire, the union representatives for coming to consensus on that. Any, anything, there was something about the task booklet I had mentioned.
Okay, yeah. So the MOU was originally, it was actually written back before we had negotiations. In the negotiations, we actually cleaned up that language. Unfortunately, the, the negotiations didn't get done in the timeframe that we thought it was going to get done. So this is more of a housekeeping item. We're basically going to take two of our experienced folks. We're not just going to give tests for officer every, you know, every year, every two years. We're only going to give them when there's a position available. So these task manuals, it's kind of what the engineers go through already. So we're just going to, these two individuals are just going to get their task manuals. One of them was previously a lieutenant here. He left and came back. And another one was a captain who also had left and come back very recently. So just speaking with the other captains, I'm comfortable with letting those guys just go through their task manual instead of having to take a formal exam. It's, it's a big burden to the department to have to put one of those on. And we're going to be, you know, basically doing the MOU and then two or three weeks, we're, we're going to tear it up because then, then the new contract will be in place. So, and then that kind of takes care of it.
Okay. Yeah. My question was, what was the eligibility test versus the task book? I was just curious.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a formal exam that they go through. Their task manual, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
The eligibility test is a formal test?
It's just a formal test.
Okay.
Yeah. Task manual basically has everything in it that they need to operate in that position. So.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
And Chief, did you have something?
You can continue.
In terms of, you know, I was, I gotta admit, I was a little, little nervous watching the fire on the 4th. The automatic aid, mutual aid with Selkirk Fire seemed, I was just blown away how great everyone worked together. The training during our discussions of separating, there's discussion of continued training and working together. Is that all going to be occurring?
It's ongoing. It's ongoing now, right? That, that actually in that fire, Chief Armstrong was first on the scene because he was at Bridgen first. That's a Selkirk Fire Chief. And I was actually out on the spit where they were doing the shoot. So it took me a couple of extra minutes to get there. He turned it over to me and basically he was going to go to the back side of the building to be the safety officer and also act as my eyes and ears back there. And I, I know that as soon as he got to the back of that building and might've gotten his truck in park, then they got toned out for a fire and sagel. So he had to leave. So it was everything worse as planned until it doesn't. And then you have to adjust and, and overcome. But it, it worked well that night. We tried to, tried to get as much done as we could with the crews we had out there. But then as, as the night wears on, you're just trying to, you know, keep it wet and keep it under control until you can get the big, the big heavy equipment in there, which was needed for that one.
Thanks, Council President.
So I don't know if this is a question, do we have an ordinance in place and a timeframe for the cleanup of the hazardous materials that are probably sitting on that city lot? And having the sidewalks closed, is there such a thing that exists for that? I know it's private piece of property, but it would seem that we have, especially to clear our sidewalks and. I know it's private piece of property, but it would seem that we have especially to clear our sidewalks and.
The report I had heard was that uh, the property owner, the business owner was working with insurance, you know, they got to get quotes, contract with someone. Um, the broad powers under our building um, official can can require people to um, mitigate hazardous conditions. So I do know that um, that they are currently working on getting contractors and quotes to clean all that up and even quickly. Uh, I can provide you an update uh, at our next meeting.
That would be great.
Did you say he did have insurance? The business was insured? Because that was never clear.
Um, uh, my understanding is there is um, and I I have not spoken to Cornell about his insurance, uh, but I believe it was a police report that I got that he was working on a uh, contract for cleanup. Uh, working through the quotes and things like that with insurance. So I don't know the details.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Was the building not owned by another individual?
Uh, that's my understanding. It was owned by a different.
So the business could be uninsured, but the building could be insured. So.
Yeah, the paper, it wasn't very clear. I was curious.
They got the day right.
Uh, anything else for uh, the fire chief? Thanks so much, Chief. Great work. Uh, some point, uh, photos. Let's uh, meet our new fire department. That's great. Awesome. Thanks. Um, any other department heads back there? I don't see Sarah's gonna talk to us a lot in a few minutes. So uh, with that, uh, any comments or announcements from uh, city council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, real quick, uh, this upcoming Saturday, July twentieth, the Panhandle Alliance for Education is holding its annual gala. Uh, for those of you that don't know, the Panhandle Alliance for Education supports our local school, local public education in Lake Pend Ore School District. Uh, they've got several annual programs from early childhood literacy to the grants, uh, as well as the Lake School District, Lake Pend Ore School District Strategic Initiatives. I'm pretty sure that they are already sold out for their gala, uh, but they are always taking donations. You can visit them at panhandlealliance.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Dick. Uh, hearing other council comments or announcements, uh, it's my privilege to um, introduce Brent Baker from Ponderay Economic Partnership to talk to us about um, what they do and what else you have for us, Brent. So thanks for coming.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, my understanding is we want to budget around ten minutes for this. It's a brief presentation. Okay, I can reduce it. I did uh, the same presentation. In essence, it took forty minutes for the commissioners as on on the fly. I'll try to figure out how to reduce that to ten. Uh, I'd I'd like to just start right in. Well, I say the Ponderay Economic Partnership was formerly known and it's it's actual technical registration with the state is as the Bonner County Economic Development Corporation. It was founded in the year two thousand uh, by a group of concerned uh, uh, businesses in the region. Thirteen of them made a commitment to get it going because they had noticed that uh, every time uh, the wholesale price of framing lumber shifted, uh, you know, uh, a few tens of dollars or hundred dollars per thousand that the whole economy in town suffered. We would just did not have enough diversification. So the goal was to diversify uh, the economy and make it more resilient so that the natural fluctuations in economy wouldn't hurt our community so bad. And they have been immensely successful, I would say, in that in that goal and that the way the community looks right now, when we see variations in 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 the economy, we do not suffer like we used to. I've I've lived here since the mid seventies going on fifty years and and the county that we see today and the Sandpoint we see today is is really a lot more resilient. I would say it really worked. And to do that, they all made uh, commitments to get the program started uh, of at the time in dollars of two thousand of uh, of uh, eight thousand dollars a year for five years, thirteen businesses and launched the thing. So when it was founded, it was founded as a one point five uh, FTE organization, five oh one C six nonprofit. And uh, and it didn't have to spend any time because it had the five year commitment. So they didn't have to spend any of their resources fundraising or grant writing. They could just get to work and so it worked. But then after the end of the five years, various things happened over time. Uh, we had some recessions. We lost some of our big supporters. Cold Water Creek was one of them and everybody here probably knows the history of what happened there. So his companies went bankrupt, sold, changed the the structure and the support started varying. And so the organization itself had to rethink how it did what it did. But it it's been around twenty five years now. And then when the pandemic hit, they uh, found themselves in a particularly challenging situation uh, in that they lost their executive director and it took them two and a half years to replace that director. And that's when I stepped in, I didn't realize they were having that problem. When I discovered I was uh, semi-retired and working as a as a consultant and a business coach and an educator. And when I found out they had that problem, I talked to my wife. We said, you know what? Let's put that on the side. I'll step in. Let's get this thing going again and strengthen it coming out of the recession. Uh, the excuse me, the uh, out of the pandemic. So during the pandemic, uh, we worked with our organization. Of course, I wasn't doing it then, but the organization worked with the city of Sandpoint in twenty twenty one. A grant was acquired and I don't know if anybody presently on the council uh, worked on that uh, effort to do a new strategy document and create a new plan for economic development because around that same time, the city had uh, a person who was doing part time planning and part time halftime economic development for the city and they lost their person as well. And then the idea was our organization existed to serve that. So we got together, city and our organization and did a took about a year and a half to do uh, the work in the community, take input from businesses and the citizens and come up with a new plan, a whole new set of bylaws. And the idea was the uh, uh, the the or the city then would in essence contract, although the exact terms of the contract, but in essence, contract the service. Since we're going to be there doing it anyway, we'd do the city's uh, share of that as well. However, it didn't uh, fully come to fruition. The city kept its membership in our organization. So historically, the city's been paying four thousand dollars a year as a as a like like the business members do, or or sustaining business members. But the idea was to contract and the city had set aside thirty thousand dollars uh, for us to in essence, do that work for the city during the year as part of our office. But the monies were set aside and ended up becoming unappropriated funds that were ultimately used for something else because the city quite rightly was not going to give those funds over to an organization that did not have a full time professional executive director. So now that's changed. And I've been working at the job now a year and a half and have my hands firmly on the reins and we're providing a lot of service now to the community. And we think it's time now to come back. So what what we're thinking is in this next next budget cycle, we're hoping to get, uh, you know, this year's right now, uh, we invoiced at the beginning of the calendar year. We're on a calendar year, not not the same fiscal year you all are. But we did our regular membership invoice at the beginning of the year. That's been traditional, but we would like now to have in the new upcoming budget, that thirty thousand dollars restored so we can get back to work and fulfill the mission uh, of that plan. How am I doing on time? Do I have a few more minutes?
Yeah.
Good? Okay, so uh, a little bit of background on rural county economic development organizations uh, in the state, there's approximately twenty twenty or twenty one rural uh, counties uh, in the state. And on average, the economic development organization in those counties gets forty four percent of its funding from the county and uh, the municipalities within that county. Last year, we got three percent of our funding from the municipalities and the county. So and a hundred percent of that three percent came from the city of Sandpoint. Thank you very much. And uh, we're very grateful for the for that that four thousand dollars that constituted three percent, but we really, really need to get back up to at least to the state average. We actually have more business activity and more tax based than most of those rural counties that are at that forty four percent. So we really need to get it back up there. So we talked to the county and the county, basically they have to go through their process. They couldn't formally do anything last night, of course, but the clear indication is uh, that they're they're going to be in and doing that. So they're going to be participating. And that was something else previously the city of Sandpoint wanted to see was they didn't want to be the only ones in the county participating and carrying everybody else. So it's my goal. I'm getting around to all the cities, already done the county and systematically all the cities to get everybody roped in and usually just telling the forty four percent three percent comparison often is enough to do it. Now, in terms of value, one of the some of the things we do right now, we're redoing the SEDS, the SEDS, C E D S, SEDS is for those of you may not be familiar is the uh, comprehensive economic development strategy that's required for federal loans. It's not required, but if you don't have it, your grant application is going to be dinged. So all the multimillion dollar uh, grant applications, everything we do, if it references the SEDS, if your economic district, which in our case is the five northern counties, has a SEDS in place and updated, then you get extra points in your grant application. And if you in your grant application specifically reference the alignment in your application for any grant with the federal government to that SEDS, you get bonus points. So it strengthens literally every grant of every city in the county by having that in place. So that's a big process. We're in the middle of that right now. There's about fifty people working on that.
And and the lead on that is PAC, right?
And PAC, right. PAC leads.
You're participating in it, right?
Right. So PAC leads the process and the five northern county uh, ED EDCs all do it uh, together, along with members of the business community. We have city counselors, mayors, business owners and citizens all participating in this. About fifty of us typically are working on this and we're in the middle of that process now. And then uh, we also, I I inaugurated a uh, uh, entrepreneurship workshop because we don't traditionally economic development organizations really in the past have concentrated on business attraction. Our two biggest problems here are uh, workforce housing, affordable workforce housing and talent supply to our businesses. And anytime we're not going to blindly attract businesses and have them compete for the same employees that are in short supply with our existing businesses. And it's just going to exacerbate until we solve the housing problem. So we focus on strengthening the businesses that are here and creating new entrepreneurship homegrown from within our community. So I started an entrepreneurship uh, workshop, which is what I've been doing for eight years before I decided to step in and do this. And uh, so for the first workshop, we held it at our at our uh, conference center. Uh, I told I told my my board that if we didn't get at least eight businesses to show up, I wasn't going to do it to make it worth the while to do it. We have to get eight. We thought, what if a lot of people want to do it? Let's set a limit at twenty eight, though, just so it's not too crowded and too hard to deliver. And to our astonishment, we had fifty three sign up for this workshop. And so we raised the limit and we served thirty three businesses with that workshop. And I was amazed at the diversity, talking about diversification of the economy in that I have a list here. Industries represented included healthcare, retail, specialty foods, home building and remodeling, electrical contracting, plumbing, engineering, including electrical, industrial, computer software and civil engineering, manufacturing, the film industry, nonprofits, transportation, hospitality, real estate, insurance, horticulture, graphic art, digital technology, music education, marketing and advertising. It was amazing. It really was. And uh, it was really, really positively received. So we're going to integrate in with it a leadership program that that supplements. A little different than what the chamber does. It's a different focus, but to develop people for organizations. The idea is to have every quarter a program. Twice a year, we'll do the entrepreneurship and twice a year we'll do the leadership. It's an example of new programs. I started a new program and have already started working with some uh, free business coaching and counseling to veterans. We refer them to existing veteran programs right now, but veterans who have recently started a business or in business already, or who would like to start one, we're offering free uh, help to them as well. And we put on the economic summit this year, save the date. September twenty fifth, you'll be seeing uh, some information on that. At the last summit we held, uh, we had uh, uh, twenty five local and regional companies plus mayors, council members, city officials, county commissioners, state representatives, Department of Commerce from Boise came up, U of I, N I C, Lake Pend Ore School District, North Idaho Business Development Corporation, nonprofit leaders, the press and a few people from the general public. And and a unique opportunity to get some interesting lectures and then network all together on how we make our our community better and stronger. That's another thing we do. And uh, uh, we uh, many of you may read in the paper, we saved the uh, the commercial kitchen out in Ponderay. So we now have created a new entity to take it back from Kitchen Spokane. And we now have the Ponderay Specialty Foods Incubator, Inc., five oh one C six nonprofit to develop small specialty foods businesses here in our county. Several of which are based in Sandpoint. We have over a dozen currently using the kitchen. Uh, that's new. And then uh, there's some other things I won't go into because I know my time has run over. But uh, in addition to the things I've described, we also have individual files and a lot much, if not most of what we do is confidential, working with businesses. But in the past year and a half, since I started, I've worked with over forty businesses that I have files on that I've given help to. One way or the one way or the other. And we've written and received grants either for ourselves or for others uh, to one, two, three, four, five different grants successfully. And then we've also written numerous uh, support letters for various municipalities and businesses. So with that, I'll mercifully bring it to a late close.
Brent, thank you so much. Uh, thanks for all you and uh, the team there does. Um, I know we are at a place in the budget where tonight we're presenting our our maximum budget. Um, so right now we don't have uh, much more than uh, I think that four thousand in there for you, but I think if not this year, over the course of the year, we can work with council and and look at your plan and um, see how we can uh, help support you uh, further. Um, with that, uh, any questions from the council for Mr. Baker? Thanks, Brent. Thanks. Keep it up. Keep doing what you're doing. Look forward to seeing you on September twenty fifth.
Thank you.
Right. Uh, next is the public forum, which allows the public to address city council and myself on items listed on the consent calendar on or on any relevant city Sandpoint related topic not included on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak now or during any other portion of the meeting when public comment is allowed, you must complete the comment signup form located at the table by the door and hand it to the chief or one of the other staff members in the back of the room to accommodate those who wish to speak during the general public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda. A total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so in that timeframe, we will reopen the public forum at the end of the meeting. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance doors. In summary, I'd ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including staff, not be boisterous or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning related matter outside of an official public hearing. Public comment time is for comments only, no question or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have questions or concerns. When you step step up to the podium, please state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Amelia Boyd.
Good evening, Ms. Boyd.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselor. So this is part one. I've tried to be tricky with this. I think Melissa helped me out with um, what I was allowed to do later as opposed to now. Once upon a time, there was a civil servant hired to fulfill a need in a small township nestled at the base of two glorious mountain ranges and next to a beautiful lake. The workings of the town needed to change and was hired and directed to lead those changes with the direction of an elected group of officials. Her qualifications and profession professionalism were appreciated by many. The town was thriving and most importantly, the many mechanics who kept the wheels turning for the town were united and content with their positions. Change wasn't always easy and perfection can never be achieved, but the mechanics were excited and happy to work for her. Decisions were made and an absent elected leader made for some challenges, but the elected group of peers voted in support of the resolution. But the elected group of peers voted in support of the resolution set forth by its highly qualified mechanics. Fast forward a number of years later, when a donor offered the town the largest donation in its history. And only fools would turn its back on such a generous offer. The excitement was palpable amongst the mechanics and the elected officials. After more than enough opportunities for residents of the town to discuss this donation and what was to come of it. And after the elected group of peers unanimously voted to move ahead, a small group reared its ugly head in disagreement. The mechanics were yelled at, threatened and intimidated for doing the jobs they were hired to do. Some of the townspeople even tied themselves to trees, which is ironic as thousands of trees have been chopped to add new chairlifts just twelve miles away. But that's another story. The nastiness by some made for trying times, but the qualified professional at the helm kept things together for her trusted and much appreciated mechanics. A change was on the horizon as the absent leader decided to step away and make way for a new one. Promises were made and a new leader came into power. A reconfiguration of what was passed discombobulated the mechanics and the content environment of their beloved workplace. Some left immediately, a few waited it out and ended up leaving anyway, while others have one foot out the door. The void without their trusted civil servant, keeping the mechanics united as a cohesive unit has had devastating consequences. What was once a thriving place of work has become a confusing, isolated shell of what it once was. How many more mechanics of this quaint town will we lose? How many lives will be uprooted? And how many more unhappy souls will wish it was how it was used to be? The moral of the story, be careful what you wish for, it will bite you in the throat.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Jennifer Ekstrom, do you wish to speak during public forum?
Thank you. Good evening, Jennifer. Mayor and counselors. So my comments are about the comprehensive plan. Is this the appropriate time for me to speak?
We're going to have a hearing on that in just a moment.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have signed up to speak during public forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just for, uh, public information, um, for our last meeting, uh, the council. Uh, would like to continue with the, uh, online Zoom comments. Uh, legal staff is working on the process to make that happen. Maybe at our next meeting. So, uh, just, uh, the public's not aware that will be coming back. So that will conclude the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. Uh, we will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is one million. Twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents for regular payables. Counselor now there, counsel there. Any questions or items you wish to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Uh, this will be a, uh. Um, I will entertain a motion, um, to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by rule, second by Dick. Sorry, a little slow there with the video there, Joel. Um, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber.
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Internet's being a little funny, sorry about that.
Was that a yes, Joel?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we'll take public testimony as adoption of the updated comprehensive plan is considered this evening. I now yield the floor to Jason Welker. And, uh. Exciting time. We're finally there, I think.
Okay, good evening again, counselors. Let me just share my screen really quick. Got a short presentation for you tonight, kind of recapping some of the background, uh, that went into the. Updated comprehensive plan that we will be considering tonight. So let me get this going. Okay. Um, first, I'd like to acknowledge the, uh, art that you're going to see in tonight's presentation. These are all sketches done by a member of our Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission, Barry Burgess. Um, who every time he sends an email to our, uh, Arts and Historic Preservation Officer includes one of his sketches as an attachment. So we've got a large. A folder full of his art and I got permission to use those tonight. So, um, just a little bit of background for. Some of the newer council members and members of the public who might not be aware what, what the comprehensive plan is, uh, why we have a comprehensive plan. And where we've come over the last almost five years in the update to our current comprehensive plan, which was adopted in two thousand nine. So these are just some, um, quotes from the introduction to our updated comp plan for you and the public to. Kind of get an understanding of what the comprehensive plan and its purpose are all about. Okay, this is not our first comprehensive plan as you, as I indicated, we adopted our first comp plan in nineteen seventy-seven. Um, the most recent update to that comp plan was act, well, the most recent update was actually in twenty nineteen, but that was just an additional chapter added to the two thousand nine comprehensive plan. Um, following new state, uh, legislation in twenty eighteen, we were, uh, required to add a chapter. Uh, because we have an airport within our city limits. So in twenty nineteen, we updated amended our comprehensive plan to add the, uh, airport facilities chapter. And we've also since twenty nineteen, um, adopted multiple community master. I've, uh, provided here for you. These are all actually very recent master plans that have been adopted, adopted just in the last five or six years. Most of these are now appendixes to our comprehensive plan. Okay, um. Just to highlight here, the amount of public engagement that we had from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four. Um, there, there's a highlight there and this has been updated since the five, uh, four community engagement. Um, efforts since January of this year. The three-phase process of developing the comp plan included establishing goals, objectives, and then the implementation table. So just some highlights there. We have forty. I went through it to confirm this. We have forty-five goals across the twelve chapters, two hundred objectives and sixty projects or plans in our implementation table. Um, growing out of those goals and objectives. And on the right there, you can see the highlight of, uh, the. Participation from the public in the development of this plan since twenty nineteen. Okay, the comp plan is a required document per state code. Um, you can see all the components on the left there. Uh, according to state law as to what must be addressed in a comprehensive plan and then how we. Included those requirements across twelve chapters in our comp plan on the right. Those are the twelve chapters in our. The comp plan you're considering tonight. Uh, this is another one of Barry's sketches. Um, our, our little friend here is pointing out the, the vision that was articulated and, and adopted for this updated comprehensive plan. So you can see those there. The, these are the goal, these are the, um, the values in our community vision. So we, we value in Sandpoint. A vibrant culture, a resilient economy, sustainable development, responsive government and a livable community. That's what we are working towards as a community. So those are kind of our, um, that's the, these, these, uh, these here present our vision statement for Sandpoint. Okay, so I just went through over the last few days and highlighted sort of like what's new, what makes this comp plan different than our twenty nine, twenty oh nine comp plan? Um, so I pulled out some sort of key takeaways from this updated comprehensive plan and I, I've, I've. Clumped them into a few categories. So first we've got the vision and values. The twenty twenty-four comp plan really emphasizes inclusivity. And forward thinking, community engagement. And I think actually some of the emphasis on community engagement is attributable to the edits made just in the last few months. Um, since this new council started, there's been a, an increased emphasis on engagement with the community and that language really came out in the final draft of this comp plan. And then the, the third one there is sustainability and resilience. We heard, uh, Mr. Baker from the, uh, Ponderay Economic Partnership talk about. Resilience and how resilient our community is. That's probably, uh, due in large part to the vision of the twenty oh nine comp plan. So that, that comp plan from fifteen years ago succeeded in a lot of ways in, in building a resilient, um, community. And then you're going to see on a later slide, um, about economic development, the, um. The diversity of, of our economy and how we've succeeded in, in promoting and, and, and maintaining a very diverse, resilient economy. So another, uh, highlight from the, the new comp plan is the projected growth. We're using a, an estimated two point four percent annual growth rate. Which would put Sandpoint's population at, uh, nearly fifteen thousand by twenty forty. That's just, that's actually a fairly conservative number. In the last four years, the growth rate exceeded that considerably. Um, but that's, that's a reality that we face that was addressed in this comp plan. And that leads to the next, um, emphasis in this comp plan as well, which is land use and housing. The scarcity of land and the high demand for housing, these are, uh, the results of that, that increased growth. But also, and this was a big theme in all of our comp plan discussions was finding that balance between residential. And commercial and light industrial uses of our land because we, we can't become a resort community that just builds housing for. You know, second homeowners and rich retirees. We have to continue to support and promote. Commercial and industrial, uh, uses of our land in the city as well. Okay, the plan emphasizes that, as I hinted before, the diverse economy, this is a, a key kind of highlight of our twenty twenty-four plan. We, we aim to create a dynamic, resilient, year-round economy that supports high-quality, high-paying jobs. Uh, we heard about entrepreneurship. We've got a thriving entrepreneurial sector in Sandpoint. Uh, thanks in large part to organizations like PoEUP, um, and the efforts of. You know, our city leaders and the Chamber of Commerce is here tonight. Mickey, thank you for coming. Um, we've, we've really got a vibrant economy, thanks in large part to the, the, just the, the vision of that previous comp plan. And that's carried forward to the next comp plan as well. Um, community and infrastructure, the responsive government side is huge. Uh, this comp plan really emphasizes a responsive government that adapts to community needs with regular updates to the community vision to reflect changing values. Okay. And that's, that's it. There's, it's a hundred and thirty-six page document. Um, it's just, just since January, I think we've held around. Nine hours of, of joint P and Z and city council workshops. We had a discussion about the proposed changes just two or three weeks ago. This has been posted for public feedback since April of twenty twenty-three. There have been several rounds of edits since then. So thi- this draft has seen a lot of refinement. Um, and I'm really. Excited for it to be adopted hopefully tonight so that we can move forward with implementing some of the, the changes to our code. And, um, other, you know, uh, plans and projects that are described in the implementation table. So I'll take any questions, comments, maybe a motion.
Thank you, Director Welker. Council members, any question for Director Welker at this time?
Excellent job. That's not a question. Very nice.
Uh, Council President Rule, do I?
Yes, I do have some questions. I have some concerns. Do we need to make a motion to then discuss or should I ask my questions?
Well, this would be questions, then we'll do a public hearing and then we will bring it to the council for deliberation and discussion and potentially a motion.
And I will hold my.
Which could include incorporating public comment, making some, uh, non-material changes, minor changes, okay? Any questions for Director Welker? All right, thank you.
Mayor, may I make a comment before we get in?
Uh, absolutely.
No changes. I, I just want to say a huge thank you to Planning and Zoning for all their work, uh, over the last year and a half. City staff, uh, the workshops I thought turned out amazing, uh, both our joint workshops with planning and zoning. Uh, huge thank you to the community members that came out and sat through those. I think we got some amazing dialogue, ideas. Language changes, additions. Um, I, I think it was well-rounded. It was a great community effort. And I thought the body of the counselors worked amazingly well with the staff and planning and zoning in our community. So I, it was a win for everybody. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Councilman Dick. Um, any other council comments or questions for, uh, Director Welker?
Nice, Lisa.
I, I, I echo that, Councilman Dick, and just want to say that this plan represents a unifying document. Um. It shouldn't be, uh, the mayors or council member or planning director or community development directors. Vision for this town, uh, this document right here, the hundred plus pages. Represents, in my opinion, our marching orders, uh, all elected and, uh, uh, employed, uh, city, uh, officials and employees. Um, thrilled to have it before us. And, um, with that, we will now proceed with the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please make sure you have a complete, uh, completed a signup form. The rules for public comment, uh, recited at the beginning of the meeting are still in effect. For those attending online, please be aware. For this pub, public hearing, we will be taking testimony only from those present in the room this evening, as was stated on the agenda. And the online forum you completed when registered, uh, remotely. Each speaker will have up to three minutes unless some present in the room has gifted you their time, in which case the speaker will have up to six minutes to speak. Both parties must complete a signup form. Uh, when you approach the podium, please state your name for the record and whether you reside in the city limits. With that, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, is the public hearing now open?
Uh, the public hearing. Is now open.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Jennifer Ekstrom.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. And I want to commend the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff and everyone who has worked so hard on this, um, comprehensive plan. And I have just a few small suggestions, which I'm hopeful might be considered at this late time in the process. They are all related with chapter eight, the Public Facilities Services and Utilities section. Um, under number eighty-three regarding the wastewater utility in the second paragraph. Um, it says, the city has initiated the preliminary engineering report for the replacement of the wastewater treatment plant, which once complete will provide service well into the future, period. I would like to suggest adding another sentence, the city will usher this upgrade with utmost urgency. Um, I do want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your previous statements that this is your highest priority and super grateful for that. Um. Previously in this process, um, my organization, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself properly. I work for the Idaho Conservation League. And we are located at one oh two South Euclid here in Sandpoint. Um, previously in this process, we had suggested moving this wastewater treatment plant upgrade from the five to ten-year. Section to the one to five-year section. So even though it is our, your, your highest priority to upgrade this plant, it seems like it would behoove the city to put. The urgency of this in the plan, either by the suggested sentence that I offered, um, or by. Going back and referring to it as part of the one to five-year plan. Either one would be wonderful. Next on number eighty-five, under stormwater management, I think there might be a typo in that. There's a reference to the twenty thirty sentence. I believe that is probably supposed to be the twenty thirty census. Um, requiring, uh, triggering a requirement that the city be compliant with federal discharge regulations for stormwater treatment. Um, and so the last, so for the sentence that says, for this reason, comma, Sandpoint is exploring the implementation of stormwater development impact fees in its current. D I F rate study. I'd like to suggest adding comma. And intends to build stormwater treatment facilities in accordance with the law. Just to complete that thought and, um, ensure that it's stated that, um, there is a plan to comply with that law. Um, next on number eighty-nine, goal one I. Um, I'd like to suggest a revision or an addition of a phrase. Um, to the clause, educating the public on issues relating to stormwater management. If it could be added, um, stormwater management and pollution prevention, or possibly just change it from management to pollution prevention. Um, if that one addition was made, it would make this section congruent with commitments the city made. In the Lake Ponderay nearshore total maximum daily load. Implementation plan, which I believe was developed in two thousand and two. And so education on pollution prevention with stormwater.
Jennifer, where was that? And you, I'll give you some extra time here. What, where was that specific, uh, that last recommendation at your?
Goal one I?
Okay.
Or is it L? I think it's I.
It's I, continue to improve the community's stormwater management infrastructure, educating the public on issues relating to stormwater management.
We worked on it. It was on page eighty-nine, but when I tried to look that up today.
This is a printed copy. It's now on page ninety-one and. Uh, goal one I. Um, could you just? Re-read your requested, uh, and, and Jason, are you capturing this stuff?
Okay. I, I got, um, you'd like to add ant pollution prevention. Was there anything else to that?
Yes, sir. No, nothing else. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Jennifer.
May I, um, suggest that we pull up the document while people are making the public comment?
Yeah.
Possible, just so we can.
Madam Clerk, I can do the timing up here if you trust me doing that. Um, that's helps.
That's hard for me to do and take notes at the same time.
Mr. Mayor. Um, can some.
I don't know. Do you have further commenters have specific suggestions like that? And in which case I can pull up the document.
Well, I think when we get to discussion, we're going to need that up there anyway. I'm just visual. And so it helps me to look at it while somebody's talking about it.
Uh, Councilwoman Rule, um, I, I think when we go to, um, deliberate and discuss the document. Um, we'll have these additions and suggestions and I think we'll be able to roll through and show you then. If Jason can capture all that at this point. We can then revisit them, um, one by one. through and show you then. If Jason can capture all that at this point, we can then revisit them um, one by one. All right, um, Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who wishes to?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Wow. Well, I guess our public engagement was either thorough or missed the mark entirely, one of the two. Um, excellent. Well, moving along then. The public hearing is now closed. Uh, council will now discuss and consider the adoption of the twenty, is it should be the twenty-twenty-four comprehensive plan?
Believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, that cover page has already been updated.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Uh, comprehensive plan, uh, council, um, consider, discuss, adopt. Who would like to go first?
Well, I have lots of comments. Oh, good. Jason has a document for me, so. Um, well, first off, I would um, like to kind of um, vent my frustration with having our last comp plan meeting during business hours when I couldn't attend. So I was a little bit disappointed in that with only having um, because of the nature of my job, when I only have a week notice, it's very hard for me to um, get that time off when it's during business hours, so. And then I had some comments, um, and I think these are on, um, these are related to the notes on the side, so I wrote them relative to that. Um, my first comment would be that um, I'm somewhat opposed to completely removing um, the downtown waterfront plan. Um, it seemed like we, it was in there the last time I went to a meeting, and then after this last one, I couldn't attend. It was removed. Um, I did leave comments with um, Director Welker, um, and I don't know how much those were interpreted or in in how the interpretation went across, or if those were presented um, as strongly um, as I would have liked. Um, my reasoning behind that is, I think there should have been some caveats in that, um, there were some very important things in there about revegetation of Sand Creek. I think that's a sustainability thing. We just talked about how we want a sustainability, uh, sustained community. It also directed us in um, code changes for massing our buildings and for the um, the facades and and the architectural shapes. Um, and I thought that I heard loud and clear from the public that that is very much what they were wanting to protect, the look of our downtown. Um, this document um, directed us to do those such things. Um, and I think those were very important pieces. Um, there were definitely many pieces of this document that I believe the public was frustrated with. But I do not believe that um, uh, removing the entire document when um, there were individuals in our community that put a lot of time and effort into this document is appropriate. Um, I did make comments relative to certain chapters that I'm sure and hope you all read. About um, uh, you know, review and revise. It would have been um, one of the larger comments relative to that plan. Um, it talked about the historic districting, which I know we have money in the budget um, for some of that. Again, building massing and heights, building architecture for facade, facades and revegetation, so. Uh, I I struggled with why um, um, that was removed when it hadn't been. Then um, there were some.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, uh, hi, Councilman Spiro. Um, Deb, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to?
Um, I'd like to say something towards that, unless you want to keep talking down. I'm sorry, it's a little awkward on the.
Yeah, I know. Um, how do you want to handle it?
If he has a comment relative to that, I'm, I'm very open to discussion.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Councilman.
Is that okay, President Rule?
Absolutely.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, President. Um, I I I will say that you're definitely missed, uh, so we're sad not to see you there for sure. Um, your comments are always welcomed and appreciated, but I do believe, uh, Councilman, or sorry, Councilman Walker, uh, uh, Mr. Walker read all your comments, and they're well-taken. If I, if I may, what is your concern about the document being removed, although we can still use the document and take the good and the bad out of it? Is there a concern there? Is there something, again, I think, I I like to think that we discussed that pretty thoroughly, about we can not have the document in the comprehensive plan, but yet utilize the document as we wish. So I just want to be, make sure that I'm not missing that as well. Because if that's the case, absolutely keep it in. But if we can still utilize it, then maybe, maybe because Council President wasn't there, maybe we can uh, uh, relay that to her, uh, uh, or help me out.
Yeah, Councilman Spiro, um, my recollection was we did discuss it, um, and I thought it was discussed early on, and then at that last meeting, there is um, uh, the council president called it a plan. I don't believe it is a plan. I believe it's a design
Report.
Report that was acknowledged by the council. It wasn't adopted formally by the council. And we did discuss the fact that, of course, there's elements of it that uh, can be utilized, but since it's not a formally adopted uh, plan like our Parks Master Plan, that uh, it didn't, uh, wasn't appropriate for it to be in the plan. Uh, that was my recollection.
So um, I would like to respond to that and say that um, there was a significant amount of funding spent on this document, and being the longest-standing council member that sits here on the dais, there had been plenty of plans made that are either called documents or plans, choose whatever you wish, but the money was spent um, that have ended up on the shelf collecting dust, and they were not pulled off and used again. And I think that there are some pretty strong opinions um, about this particular document. Um, and my concern is that if we, why wouldn't we want to include the architectural and the massing and the zoning and all the things that the public is asking for? And if it isn't of an official plan, then why not conclude it in the comprehensive plan as a reference document? Um, and so that it may be vetted much more strongly, and the things that we've already spent money on can be pulled from that document instead of it leaving being out of the process. It makes no sense to me to leave it out of the process.
Uh, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, may, maybe with that, maybe you can help me and the, me and the public again, uh, the pros and the cons of it being in or not being in. Maybe you can refresh our memories.
Sure, well, I.
Because I'm fine, I'm fine either way, but I don't want to do us a disservice by not putting it in there.
Yeah, I mentioned the, the first thing is it's a design report, um, that um, whether it was um, you know, funded by the city or through grants or other reasons, uh, it was a design report that um, uh, was not formally adopted, like we adopt our master plans in the city. Uh, again, our recreation, our watershed, our parks, uh, plan, et cetera. Um, and then secondarily, um, this may be more opinion, um, but I'll state it. Um, the plan was a, a fantasy plan. It included uh, arguably uh, if not tens, um, many tens of millions of dollars of improvements. Um, and i- it was sort of a visioning um, document. Um, we have taken uh, elements of it, um, such as what's on the screen right now, showing the the preferred historic district, um, and we uh, in fact, are looking at that, that uh, report for the Phase Three Downtown Revitalization uh, for Sura to work from Bridge Street South. So we are using it, we are uh, recognizing it, it's just not an adopted plan, and I thought the council uh, during the workshops was uh, unanimous that it was to be removed. It sounds like Councilwoman Rule is asking for reconsideration of that.
May I say something? I was one that did pull a couple of those things out after talking to Jason about things I did like in it. And I did bring that forth on that last meeting, and he did say that you also, somebody said that you also appreciated those things. And then the discussion was, like he's saying, that we could still use what we wanted from it, but not. It was, just seemed better after the discussion to just leave it out, is what I remember.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, um, I'm through with that discussion. Um, I just wanted that to be said um, out there. Um, I can move on to my next comment, which was, at one point, um, labeled um, seventy-six. Um, and there was a reference to removing open space. Um, and because I wasn't at that meeting, I was very um, curious about why we would remove the comment of open space from Parks, Recs and Open Space. And then when I went through and started to read the budget, I noticed that um, there were different pieces in our, our current um, proposed budget that we'll be dealing with later this evening that actually referred to our open space. But yet, in our comp plan, we want to remove that, so.
Uh, Council uh, President, I believe you may be taking that out of context. It is still references Parks, Rec and Open Space programs. I think um, the point I brought up is we don't have a Parks, Recreation, Open Space Department or Division. So it seemed confusing to be adding onto what we call our division. It's the Parks and, well, it's Planning, Community, Community Planning and Development, under that is Parks and Rec. So we have not formally adopted a open space naming or nomenclature to that division. Uh, that's, that was my recollection of why uh, the, the change was made.
We did talk about that, too.
Okay, all right. Again, because I could not.
And I just, I'm sorry, but if you scroll back up, there was, there is reference in the writing to open space, because that was something that I think I brought up also, because somebody had requested it in the, maybe it was you in the title. I just saw something about, can you go up another? I just saw open space. Oh, yep, right on this page. Additional services include the community garden, recreation, programming and parks and open spaces.
Right, okay. I think we're just not being consistent across all areas when I'm reading budget, or um, when I'm reading this, and if this is our plan going forward, maybe we need to codify that or do something, because our open space in the watershed is becoming um, part of the recreation plan and all of those other things. And so I think it makes sense to just be consistent between all of those documents, so that everybody knows what we're talking about and, and, you know, making sure we know which department is managing those pieces and parts and in the um, case of the watershed, of course, we know there are multiple entities with protection of our water and timber and those other things, so.
Can I interrupt you for a question to um, our attorney? Zach, um, it's my understanding that upon adoption, if we found Scribner's errors and maybe some minor inconsistency of uh, wording, maybe we missed uh, that, we have the latitude to change that and it's still adopted. Is that correct?
That's correct, as long as it's like a Scribner's error. Um, and I, I'm not sure that omitting or or inquiring or including open spaces quite qualifies as a Scribner's error, so just to clarify that.
Okay.
Okay, um, I only have a few more comments. That's probably um, good. Um, so um, down further, and um, I did this off the other document, so I'm at one oh four, three.
Is that the page number, or is that the comment?
Those are the comment numbers, I think. To go back to the.
Yeah.
Scratch that one.
Yeah, I was working off the scratch one, one when I did this.
If you can just reference the um, goal or objective, I can find that.
That's not how I wrote it down in my notes. Sorry, Jason. Still haven't figured out how to highlight the documents the way you like it. Um, working on it. I'll work toward that. Um, so it's mainly with um, uh, the removal um of the um, maybe this is down in implementation, actually. The feasibility of the parking structure and um, removing that out of a, a long-range plan. And my concern there is um, not that we can't um, fix up the current parking lot, because that has been in our budget to fix up for, I can't tell you how many years and it hasn't happened, so I will be happy to see that happen. But I think actually removing that out of our comp plan, which is a long-range plan, especially with the um, new large hotel being built in town, um, that um, we may still need to assess the feasibility that uh, of that type of structure. Um, just due to the increase of what these conferences, because they're gonna have large conference rooms and other things like that, of actually having a parking structure where our hopefully, by the end of next year, nice new fancier parking lot is gonna be.
It's fall.
It's fall. Okay, there you go. But do you, I hope the council can understand the point I'm making, that um, change happens, towns grow, um, we're kind of in that struggle of growth right now, so um, and everybody always complains about parking. So funding it, all those other things are not what the comp plan is about, but I think it's short-sighted to not think that we'll never need one. So I think it needs to stay on our radar, but it doesn't need to be a tomorrow plan, because we already have it tomorrow. It is in the implementation.
Yeah, so.
Do we have a page number?
This is, this is one of those.
There are nine, page three.
It's referenced on page eighty-seven of the document. Um, and in the, we did remove the project from the implementation table with regards to the parking structure. Um, clearly, we did not catch every reference to a parking structure in the document, because it's still mentioned on this
Okay.
city facilities kind of project checklist here. So. So it is still referenced in the plan, just not on the implementation table.
Okay, okay.
So I think as referenced here, it gives us some latitude to, as it says there on page eighty-seven, for the public who downloaded the online version. Um, city-owned downtown parking lot provides a hundred and twenty-one free parking spaces. The site is currently being evaluated as a site for mixed-use development, incorporating parking structure through a public-private partnership.
Okay, okay.
I think it still.
So it was more about the.
Flexibility.
Table piece, and um, I got caught up in that piece of it, but that's fine, still in the document, so. Um, then the final thing would again be in the implementation plan, is the way I wrote it down. It talks about review and revision of the watershed recreation master plan, the recreation piece of it, and you know, my experience through that whole public process is that the public was very on board with the recreation plan um, in the watershed, and I think we had um, this room was packed full, standing room only, um, when that plan finally happened. So I was curious why that was in there to begin with, or is that more of a subtle thing as relative to the mapping of certain trails, that there might need to be small revisions, I would think that that. So I just want to make sure that um.
That's not putting the watershed master plan, rec plan, out for wholesale.
Out for wholesale and for us to all go away, and a whole new council to come up here and just say, all right, we're gonna build nine thousand condos in the watershed. So, anyway, I just wanted to point that out, because I, that seemed like a very odd thing to me.
I, I don't recollect that Council, Councilwoman Rule or Council President Rule. I don't recollect that specific tweak or addition or subtraction.
I wrote it down under the implementation table, which was labeled as twelve.
Jason, do you recollect that discussion?
After twelve?
I'm looking for the specific reference to the watershed rec plan in the so it does, we do have uh, Chapter Seven, Parks and Recreation, Implement Site-Specific Master Plans. Review and you, review and revise, and this was a suggestion, one I suggested at it during our most recent rounds of review. Review and revise the site-specific master plans for City Beach Downtown Waterfront, Traverse Park and Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Plan.
So I don't think it was, that, that brings back my recollection. I don't think it was specific to um.
I guess my point was, I think that the watershed plan shouldn't be. I agree with the Traverse Park and City Beach part, and I should have made, I was doing this late at night. I should have specified in that comment more specifically that I agree that in town, there needs to be some significant revision and public input. But in that watershed plan, it seems like we did a pretty darn good job of that, and it was completed very recently. So anyway, that's a small little word tweaking.
If, if I may, Councilwoman Rule, I, I, my suspicion here is that when this implementation table was originally drafted, we were probably still in the process of developing our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And during that process, the watershed recreation component was supposed to be a chapter to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So that was originally going to include five site-specific master plans. When it was adopted in twenty twenty, there was no site-specific master plan included for the watershed. So we then began the watershed recreation master planning process in twenty twenty-one, when Maeve joined us. And over the next two years, we developed and then adopted the watershed site-specific recreation plan in twenty twenty-three. So I think your suggestion might be to separate. So I think your suggestion might be to separate those out because originally when this was drafted, they were all going to be in one recreation plan. But maybe it makes sense since one precedes the other by three years to create a separate a separate row in our implementation table for the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Master Plan. Would that be a suggestion that that I hear you making?
Correct, yes, without review and revised, but whereas the other ones are going to be in a review and revise.
Well, then we did change the language from implement components of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to review and revise. Um so I think, are you suggesting that?
We lost part of it. I think the intent was to review and revise the in-town stuff and to probably implement the watershed plan that was just completed. If that's reasonable with the rest of the council at that interpretation.
Could you pull that implementation table up?
Yeah, sorry, I'm sharing just the PDF right now. So let me unshare my screen and then I'll share the.
Because I've just got the old.
The implementation table. So here's, if I can get this up here. Here's the current version of our implementation table and I'll zoom in for you. Um.
All right, it's chapter.
It's the.
Seven.
Right there, chapter seven. It's it's the box that I've got highlighted there.
So um Council President Rule, uh would you be friendly to making a motion to um remove watershed recreation plan from this box that's highlighted?
Absolutely, and include it as an item in and of itself for implementation.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Do we need a roll call, Melissa?
Yeah, aye.
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 All right, all those opposed? All right.
Okay, I've added that to my notes. That's an easy amendment to the implementation table that I can make.
That's all I got.
Excellent. Um council members, anyone else have um comments or discussion on the draft two thousand and twenty-four comprehensive plan?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I'd like to review, uh consider and discuss the comments that were made in the public here.
The what? Oh, the comments. Go ahead, right away.
Um, did you write those down, Jason?
I took detailed notes, yeah. And I'll bring, why don't I bring those up really quick and?
From Jennifer types, a hundred words a minute. These are what?
So based on Ms. Ekstrom's comments, uh she suggested on page eighty-three um she wants to add a line and, well, let me just share my notes with you. I'll put them up on the screen for you guys. And I apologize, uh Jennifer, if they don't capture everything you said, but.
I have her word for word if you want.
Okay.
See this.
Did you read um the page eighty-three or I can? Thank you. Um page eighty-three, under wastewater utility, second paragraph. Uh the city has initiated the preliminary engineering report for the replacement of the wastewater treatment plant, which once completed will provide service well into the future. The proposed addition is the city will usher this upgrade within utmost urgency.
Did you, Ms. Mayor, did you just add her suggested language there?
Her her suggested language is the city will usher this upgrade in utmost urgency.
Correct. So city will usher this upgrade with that. That's a suggested addition. So that's what is being, is that?
Would you like to?
Council members, that would you like to propose adding?
Should we do them one by one or?
Yeah, I think so. There aren't many.
If I'm like, um I think we're, the city has already moved into the one to five-year thing, which was the second half of her comment and moving it out of the five to ten years. So if our implementation table is.
It was taken out, the one to five. We we talked about changing it when we discussed it one meeting. And then when I mentioned it, it got taken out totally in years. And so that's what she's referring to, I believe, because she was wanting the one to five instead of the five to ten a long time ago when we had taken public comment. And then we go back and read it now. It's, there's no years in there. And that's what she would like to, as I understand.
All right, misunderstanding. I got it. I see where you're.
She wants it in there that we're doing it right now.
I have no objection. It is my number one priority.
It is. I told you that.
So I'll just double check the implementation table to make sure that that's listed as a short-term priority, not a medium or long-term priority.
Is there implied consent by the council and it's fine?
Yes.
That in the implementation table?
Yes.
All right, um get the typo. Um anything else, Councilman Trevor?
This is another suggested addition.
Yeah, the goal. Do we need to discuss that or is that already being incorporated?
Which one are we looking at? Intends to build stormwater treatment facilities in accordance with the law?
And pollution prevention was the suggested edit.
You know, depending on what happens at the election, the law could change pretty radically. Um I I would say the city is bound to at least meet the standards applied by the law and if not exceed them if that law doesn't exist in uh a few years, which it might not. Um go ahead, Jennifer. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. The reason why I suggested um in accordance with the law is because it would come after the reference to the um with this sentence, given expected growth rates endpoint is likely to pass the pollution population threshold of ten thousand residents at the time of the two thousand and thirty census, which will trigger a requirement that the city is compliant with federal discharge regulations for stormwater treatment. So with that reference to federal discharge regulations, that's what I'm referring back to when I say in accordance with the law.
Understood. I I I don't have any objection to it. I think we will be following the law. It will have a big knock on the door, but um.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, there's a lot of reference to developing our stormwater facility, which you discussed um at our meeting the other day, so.
Think it's covered?
Why not?
Oh.
We can put it in here.
I love to accommodate the public.
Yeah.
Um uh somebody want to make a motion to uh add that uh amended language?
I will make the motion to add that amended language.
There's a second?
Second.
Uh motion by Duquette, second by Dick. Uh now, council, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Aye.
Excellent, moving on.
Uh the 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 final suggested change was the addition of and pollution prevention to the sentence you see there. Goal one, aye on page eighty-nine. If, did I, did the council just vote on that? Or are we going to make a motion for that as well?
Um so adding pollution, and pollution prevention on page, what is, I have is ninety-one, goal one, uh aye. Um.
I move to add pollution and prevention.
And pollution prevention.
And pollution prevention.
Second.
Moved by uh Rule, second by Dick. Uh all those in favor?
All right. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Done.
Aye.
Hey, does that cover all the public comments that you were referencing, Councilman Trevor?
I believe it does.
Any other thing you want to visit? I'm going to go in uh in age order here.
Age order?
Go ahead.
I should have gone first.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette. Are there any items you'd like to discuss, suggest modifying?
Um.
Go ahead.
In the definitions, sustainability. I didn't like the definition we had, but in the beginning, those little bullet points, that's sustainability to me. And in the definitions, it's pretty generic and it mentions nothing about resources or the environment. But in the beginning, Jason, where you showed those little flags and the dude with the it explained it well. So I don't know.
Do you propose language, Councilwoman Duquette?
Well, what do you think? Should we put that in the definitions as well? I guess I just.
Can you go to the definitions page, uh Mr. Welker, please?
The definitions has nothing, basically.
What page is definitions on?
I don't know. I can't get it on my little iPad. I don't know why. I shouldn't brought my big computer.
Okay, here's the definition of sustainable development on the goals and objectives, or sorry, the vision.
Based on principles that assure good stewardship of resource and responsible outcomes relative to the built and natural environment.
You you like that definition?
That I should look at the UN and that's what they, I I read so many, so many articles by them today because they mentioned they're more about building than the development part, but using the resources wisely and the social and they add cultural in there, not just a generic what we do today helps.
Well, I'm not sure we can um wordsmith on the fly here. If there's a language that you would like to uh propose, um happy to have you advance that as a motion.
I can wordsmith education.
It's difficult to wordsmith uh at a meeting.
If I may, would.
Would you?
Um I honestly haven't looked at the definitions appendix very closely lately. Um and I don't have it. It's, I'd have to go to the website to actually find that. But would you like me to review the definition of sustainability in the definitions appendix and align it with the definition in our vision statement?
Sure, if I could work with you or see what you're putting and then.
I don't, I don't actually believe the appendix with definitions is part of the comp plan necessarily. It's.
Probably be referenced. It could potentially have different meanings to different people. Um I guess the vision that you just brought up, um Mr. Welker. Um I I'd like to have pretty clear language on this because I know uh the the subject and the definition can be sometimes um uh have differing opinions.
Can I read you a couple? I was just thinking, since that was already in the plan, it would be easy. I've got sustainable community uses its resources to meet current needs, ensuring adequate resources are available for future generations.
Would you like to propose adding that as our definition for sustainability?
I can read one more. I I guess I want.
Your motion, your motion, okay.
Is what I'm trying, I'm struggling with. Um sustainable cities are resilient and able to adapt to and mitigate and promote economic, social and environmental change. I just think somewhere in there it needs to be.
Well, the definition is sustainability.
Yes.
So um in my history, uh I've seen many definitions. They typically talk about um use of resources and management that doesn't jeopardize uh the viability of future generations.
Resources is what's missing in our definition in the comp plan appendix or whatever that is. It's it's, if you want to, if we can use the one that's in the beginning, that would be fine with me.
Would you like to make that motion?
Can I see it again? Or does somebody want to help me?
Uh so here's the, here's the definition that's in our current uh definitions appendix to the comp plan. A continuing process of social and economic development, which meets the needs of present, of the present generation without compromising the needs and.
Right.
The future generations.
Needs to me is generic.
And then the the language that's at at the beginning of our comp plan within our vision is development should be based on principles that assure good stewardship of resources and responsible outcomes relative to the built and natural environment.
Okay, so can we say sustainability is that?
So um.
Definition was sustainability.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, uh Councilman Sparrow.
Uh may, maybe this will help, maybe it won't, but um Councilwoman Duquette, what what is, what is your concern?
My concern is that we don't mention our natural resources and our environment.
So so your, is your concern, uh can you give me an example of if we don't change the language now, what could happen?
Nope, I can't give you an example of what would happen, but people would not understand the depth of sustainability.
Okay, thank you. I I'm, go ahead. I'm just trying to have a conversation to help flesh it out. Maybe we could help with the language I understand properly, but that's okay if you don't.
It, you know, and if we keep that, as long as it's in the beginning, I'm fine.
Great. Um any other proposed changes or comments? Go ahead.
Um there's a a typo in chapter six.
Okay.
Multimodal and I, like I said, this, I don't know why my iPad won't pull it up.
I think um typos we can probably address um.
Okay.
Post adoption.
If Mr. Mayor, it is worth pointing him out.
Yeah.
Okay, it says land widths and I think you want lane widths and it talks about streets.
Yep, that's probably a typo.
Pull it up.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll fix that.
Okay. And then a definition for heritage tree. I know we talked about that in a lot of the meetings we had and it never got put in there. And I looked back through the document and we do refer to heritage trees. So I think, and the definition, I think we've.
So you'd like that added to the definition appendix? Is everybody okay if we add the definition of heritage trees to the appendix?
Can you read the definition?
Um I can. Oh, the one that we had talked about, but it can be shortened. A heritage tree is a tree or collection of trees and maybe um Eric could help. That is acknowledged and valued for the exceptional characteristics that set it apart from others, including size, species, cultural or historic value, as well as other criteria the tree commission or historic preservation commission may later define.
Is that a motion to add that definition to the appendix? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
I don't.
Aye.
I have one more. I apologize. But I have talked about projections in chapter one. You've got all the, this is a twenty-year document. The climate is changing for whatever reason. You had said at one point I could put a projection, a map of projection of temperature precipitation. We do have pictures of population economics. Those are all tied in. That's all, that could all change with what climate scientists and the University of Idaho and um EPA and the United Nations, I mean, n- nobody's a whack job talking about.
Councilwoman Duquette, with all respect, so where we're at in this document is we're about to potentially adopt it.
I know.
So the uh opportunity at hand is to present your fellow council members with insertions, changes, deletions.
Right.
Um barring, having those before us to discuss. Um I don't know if you want to suggest that we table this for another couple of weeks till you can present something that you're happy with or feel is appropriate uh or not, but.
Tried to do this when we were all meeting and you did say that we could do it.
Yeah, the process is to bring us what you would like to be put in here.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Rule.
Suggestion.
Sure.
Um this document is not written in stone, so if at a future date, when you can pull your thoughts together and you have a little bit more time to process it, you can bring this back for an amendment. That could be in two months or three months or um at a further date, just because we're adopting the the ninety-nine point nine percent of the document. If there is a smaller change that you just don't have a clear thought on this evening, um I also have that problem. I need more time to process. Um we can do that.
I did find lots of maps.
For the suggestion.
Yes, I appreciate that. I I'm just saying I have lots of maps. I wanted help. I wanted it to be a community discussion of which map would go in there that everybody would be happy with. But I don't have the article with all the maps.
Okay, well, as Council President Rule mentioned, uh at a future date, we can schedule an amendment to the comp plan. You can present some various maps, defend them, uh promote them and um can the council can consider.
Would it be like an appendix? Because then you can't recreate the pages.
No, we can.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep, uh I was fortunate enough to be at all the workshops and participated. I thought we all worked really well together, as I stated earlier. Thank you, Jennifer, for your additions as well too and counselors. Um the only thing that I'd like to touch on is the downtown waterfront plan, as I also struggled with that too, Council President.
Uh Councilman Dick, can I just um, I I words matter to me. It's it's, I don't believe it's a plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
I believe, what's the official?
It's the downtown waterfront design report.
Design.
Design report. I'm sorry.
Design report, no, I appreciate that.
I just want to call.
Uh with the exclusion of the report and I would just hope as we move forward, because that was meaningful in several different areas to the community. Uh we had originally directed workshops prior to the new administration coming in. And I hope that after moving forward and adopting this great uh comprehensive plan, that I would get support in directing workshops for the community on building heights, massing first-in bridge and first-in superior, which I think were some of the biggest things that came out of the report.
Um great point, uh Councilman Dick. And what I'm going to leave you with tonight is some more work. Um assuming we adopt this tonight, our new plan. Um, assuming we adopt this tonight, our new planning, senior planner, Bill Dean, Radica, uh, Mister Welker, and the Planning Commission will be embarking now that they have our vision on those revisions to the code. Um, I I was in that position in two thousand nine. Um, we're going to do that in-house with some outside help, but we have a lot of in-house expertise. But one of the things, um, the Planning Commission and the Planning Department will need is your direction on which segment of the the code they start working on. For example, they've spent six months working on ADUs. We know that's an issue. Um, the subdivision ordinance has some challenges with buildings being located to the front of the street and double frontage roads. So that could be a section they work on. The downtown commercial A zone has, um, questions about historic districts massing height. So, um, I think it would be very helpful for, uh, Mister Welker, uh, Mister Dean and the Planning Commission. If the council could give some direction, uh, absence of that, I I certainly will point them in a direction. But I defer to you as to which code section will be the priority. Um, based on historic, um, you know, relevance, these sections will take, uh, months each one to work on. It'll be an iterative process where Mister Dean will work the Planning Commission. He'll bring them examples, will identify what's not working. Uh, he'll bring them revised opportunities. There'll be public feedback at each meeting, and they will eventually bring us a revised, uh, zoning code for our residents, for our subdivisions, for our downtown and our various commercial zones. So just keep that in mind, uh, at the end of this adoption. If it's adopted, I'm going to ask you to give some direction or at least try to get some consensus on which is the most important to start on.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Dick? Councilman Howard, anything?
No.
Excellent. Well, I am very proud. Uh, we all stand on the shoulders of people who have worked on this for years. And, uh, I'm excited to, uh, ask, uh, and entertain a motion for approval of the resolution adopting the updated two thousand twenty four Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan.
Mister Mayor, you didn't ask Mister Espiro if he had.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joel.
I'm 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 crying, I'm crying in the corner. How dare you? No, I am kidding. Thank you, uh, President. Uh, no, great. And I just want to say I didn't get to it earlier. Uh, internet's been a little interesting here, but I I even in our disagreements at the meetings, I appreciated how they were handled with maturity. And we still got through this, um, in a very mature way. So, uh, kudos to everybody involved. Thank you. I think this is great.
The fire chief did not allow me to bring pyrotechnics in the room. But, um, again, I entertain a motion, would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution adopting the two thousand twenty four Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan.
So moved.
Moved by Council President Rule.
Second.
Joel gets the second on that.
Okay. Second by Councilman, uh, Spiro. Um, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Duquette.
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow.
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
Congratulations.
And does it sound like I'm yelling at you guys or is it okay?
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe take a short.
Uh, that's exactly what I was thinking. We are all done with, uh, old business. We're about to, uh, embark on new business, including the budget, preliminary budget, uh, presentation. Um, let's take a seven minute, uh, recess for a bathroom break. Thank you. It's seven thirty three P M, um, reopening the meeting, continuing the meeting. Um, Madam Cork, I could use some direction. I I failed in my exuberance, failed to try to, uh, draw out council preference for an order of zoning districts for the Planning Department to start working on. Um, is there a specific process I need to follow to reopen that discussion?
Uh, Mister Mayor, no.
Okay, excellent. Uh, council members, um, regarding now that we've, uh, reached that milestone of adopting the comp plan, um, as I mentioned, there are competing, uh, needs, concerns, uh, across all zoning districts. Um, and again, residential, the the Planning Commission's been working on, um, you know, accessory dwelling units for about six months. They're fairly teed up in that that realm. That could move pretty quickly, uh, with them working on that and bringing us, uh, some new code for the residential districts. The downtown, uh, there's been, um, discussion about building heights, massing, things like that. Um, that could be a priority. But, um, I guess, uh, I'll do, and then we have our subdivision code. We were just talking about cul-de-sacs, double frontage lots, connectivity. That needs to be tweaked, and all these tweaks will look at this comp plan and take guidance from that comp plan to, uh, direct the new zoning code or the changes to the zoning code. So with that said, um, does anyone believe that there is a, uh, priority zone for them to start working on or issue, um, that I can direct Mister Welker and Plan Department and Planning and Zoning Commission to start working on? Uh, and we can come up with a second and third, um, thereafter. Is anyone passionate about or feel like?
If I might, um, well, I think we heard a huge outcry when the supposed pictures and proposed first in bridge, um, uh, hole in the ground happened. Um, and I think, um, the public, um, was really pushing for that. Um, there had been some meetings that had happened before that. Um, and then they looked like they were set aside. Um, we were on a timeline to really get those historic, um, districts developed and, um, the downtown massing of the buildings and the appropriate facades, as I spoke to from, um, the design report. Um, so that Cedar First Avenue inclusive of the historic districts would be something I would put as a priority.
That'd be our commercial A zone or commercial zones?
Um. I don't know if I would put it into the zone as much as I would put it into how we're adapting the code to our downtown core.
So the zoning, um, will be redeveloped, which will implement those standards. The zoning is the actual language that will stipulate these these requirements. And that is the commercial A. We also have problems on commercial B and commercial C, which is primarily the Highway Two Corridor West. So, or am I hearing?
Are we talking zoning or codes?
This is the the zoning is the code. So, um, the zoning, the code stipulates.
Here's the zoning code, yes. When you say zoning, I think about changing the actual lines of those.
No, not a zone change, the zoning code.
That when you talk about zone, I think zone change. When I know the ordinances are part of zones where you can build, but I'm talking specific to the ordinances that I think we need to manage. So I'm not talking specific to one specific zone necessarily. But we did talk about making, um, uh, dividing his into different historic districts so that then we could change those codes that relate to building massing and building architecture and things like that. So I think what the public has told us that their priority is to manage that and the downtown core, which would be first Cedar, potentially Second Avenue. Um, but I'm going to allow for the public and, um, the planning to determine those things. Um, I don't know if I'm I'm not getting any wild shakes from the rest of the council in that. I'm hoping that's a correct interpretation. Um, although, close to my heart, I hate cul-de-sacs and double frontage lots. So I just like to do them all at once. Can't happen, can't happen. Um, uh, um, so I do understand, um, and it worries me that we we can't move along quicker, but we can only move as fast as we can move. But that's what I would prioritize. Hopefully, that was clear enough to.
That's clear. That gives me direction from your perspective. And just to restate that, um, the practical implication of it is, uh, I would direct, um, Planning Director Welker and Senior Planners and Planning Commission to start working on our commercial zoning. The area you talk about is in our commercial zoning. It may end up being a sub-area zone. It may end up including historic districts. It may, uh, include having, um, you know, a a design booklet for preferences in that area. It's going to involve legal, but it will encompass, we'll start with the commercial. Um, is that what I'm hearing? As with a focus on downtown.
Yes.
Anyone else have either objection to that or alternative places to start in the zoning code?
Um, Mister Mayor? I I believe the downtown is crucial. I think I heard frustration from planning and zoning about they were so s- so in involved in the ADU thing that I thought they thought they were pretty close to that. If that could move quicker with background and Jason's department doing the prerequisites for the downtown, I don't know how that would work. But I do remember some frustration with the planning and zoning that.
Yeah, they they have done a lot of work on ADUs, and they that would be the fastest, quickest, uh, change to our zoning code, uh, from where I sit right now. That could that could respond to the comp plan direction. If we started with the residential zoning, um, as and specifically the ADUs. But it's more than just ADUs. ADUs are a portion of the residential zoning. Lot size, coverage, impervious surface, uh, building setbacks, um, off-street parking. This all ties into the residential zoning.
And as a resident in the neighborhood, that is my like cul-de-sacs. For you, that is my big concern right now, but the downtown is definitely a project needing.
Good news is there's not a whole lot of infill opportunity for a whole lot more cul-de-sacs in town. Um, uh, but there are some areas still. We do have some infill.
And we have ordinance that disallows double frontage, but we have, um, had allowances.
Yep.
That I'm unhappy with. Um, uh, to add to the commercial piece, um, I would also point out that I think I would like staff to look a little bit closer at, um, the area in town of the commercial buildings relative to setbacks, because I think there needs to be a little bit more careful assessment. For instance, the new building that the county built on the corner of Ontario and, um, Division, which now because the sidewalks go right to curb, we're going to run into the same problem we have on Division that we don't have snow storage. And because I understand why the code is that way, commercial for yet again, Cedar Street Downtown, it's a very different environment there. I I was on board when we wrote the code for that, but I think that is a little something that we need to consider tweaking when we are not in that so commercial type of walking district as in downtown, um, because we need snow storage. We, um, need other things like that. So I think that, um, hindsight's twenty twenty.
Yeah, I I'm, uh, confident they will look at all aspects of the commercial zoning. Uh, getting back to the root question, anyone else feel differently that the commercial zones are the priority first ones to work on?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
If I understand you correctly, you're saying that we have to go through an entire zone one by one. We can't, um, address certain issues in one zone and then certain issues in another zone? And then go back to say?
Yeah, yeah, you, I mean, uh, preferably, uh, you address the zoning district holistically. You look at the comp plan. What do we want to achieve as new development, new investment occurs? So, uh, it's best not to duct tape it every every three weeks. You want to come up with a new code, look at the existing code, throw it out, replace it with something else or tweak it holistically, though. Um, yeah, that's that's the preferred path to re, uh, updating your zoning code.
To the Council President's point, there are specific, um, situations in in parts of zones that require attention that maybe are more urgent than others. Um, is that possible to address those? Or do we literally have to go through all three commercial before we can touch anything else?
Uh, I mean, they could start with commercial A, um, which is our primarily our downtown. And then they could jump into residential and come back and do commercial B and C, maybe combine them into one zone. Um, but it's nice for the Planning Commission to have sort of the mission. What, you know, we're looking at our commercial areas. How, what do we need to look at in terms of setbacks, design, building areas, et cetera, heights, um, bulk mass? So it's it's preferable not to spend their precious time, our precious time, working on a quick fix when we're gonna, we know that there's a holistic, um, cure that we need to apply. And they they take about, you know, um, in oh nine, it was six to seven months per zone that we redid. And then they brought them to, we brought them to the council per zone, okay? And then they started working on the second one and the next one.
It's my opinion that, uh, affordable housing is one of the biggest issues that we have in this town. And we just heard one of our business leaders talk about how it's one of the biggest barriers to economic development. And so I would really like to see, um, progress on that part of our zoning. But I want to acknowledge that, um, once the area that's being proposed for historic preservation is redeveloped, that ship will have sailed. And so I think that that, uh, possibly bumps it up in the priority. However, zones B and C possibly are not as urgent. So that would be my preference would be to start with.
Commercial A.
A and then move to residential before the other two commercial zones.
And keep in mind, there's also the subdivision code. That deals with lot size, shape, access, frontage. That's a whole nother.
I fully recognize that residential will probably take the longest out of all of them, which is why I think that we should probably start with commercial A.
Great. Anyone, uh, oppose that order, commercial A, and then jumping into the residential zones and then circling back on industrial or some of our other zones and subdivision code?
No, no. But Mister Mayor?
Go ahead, uh, Councilman Sparrow.
Um, yeah, not opposed to that. I do have a question. Um, what's affordable housing?
Uh, there's lots of definitions.
And do you mind telling me? And do you mind telling me what the, uh, what if the price of affordable housing is in Sandpoint, Idaho and how we get there?
Yeah, how we get there, I think we'll all have different opinions, Councilman Espiro.
Um, okay.
But, um, um, you know, generally it's, uh, housing burden that's no more than thirty percent of, uh, households' income. Um, uh, or there's, you can look at, uh, area median income. Um, so there's a lot of different string sticks. Um, I would point out that, uh, between Pondre and Sandpoint, there's probably between eight hundred and a thousand, uh, multifamily units in the pipeline, either issued building permits, being constructed. Um, opinion here, the private sector is responding tremendously to our need for more housing.
Great, thank you.
So, uh, and you go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
You mentioned that subdivision code would come after all of the rest. Is that not part of the code within each zone?
No, subdivision code stands out specifically. Um, it is, you know, the, uh, it does touch on the zoning. For example, in the, let's say, residential multifamily zone, you have to have so many square feet, um, per unit. But the actual lot creation, the subdivision of land, is going to talk about, uh, layout, connectivity of lots, um, you know, intersection of traffic, um, open space potentially, um, uh, street frontage, things to that effect. So the subdivision code is what it takes to actually split a piece of property. And then the zoning code controls what gets built on the property is a good way to think of it.
Interesting.
So what part is?
And the use is allowed. The use is allowed.
Or do the ADU?
That would be in the zoning code. Um, it would, they would authorize accessory dwelling units as a use. And then there would likely be standards and bulk and how much area do you need? What are the setbacks in the residential A zone, the residential multifamily zone, et cetera? So it'll be, we'll be doing this for, uh, in the wastewater plant for the next year and a half, two years. This is like big, big stuff, so. Uh, I'm I'm hearing no objection. I I think there's, sounds like I have, uh, direction, uh, to advise and direct my, uh, Planning and Community Development Department and Planning Commission on where to start. Thank you. Um, don't want to cut anyone off. Anyone have anything else to say on that? Appreciate your guidance. Next new business, thank you, uh, Sarah, uh, our Finance Director. We are now moving on with the exciting, um, new business. Actually, no, excuse me. new business. Actually, no, excuse me, um this is uh an ordinance that proposed to amend Sandpoint City Code Title One, Chapter Six. Municipal officers and employees. Little background, um you know, as you are aware, if you've looked at the budget, there is no city administrator position uh or department. True to my campaign objectives, um uh we have either put in place or about to hire the seven department heads. Who will um run the city with direct reporting to the council and myself. Um by making um the uh these positions appointed. Um as you saw in my memo, it, in my opinion, gives the ability for these positions to be, speak truth to power. Um without the fear that the mayor is going to fire them. Uh I think it's super important that uh the departments have heads can speak uh freely. And um without that fear of um conflict with their, their boss. So um I would appreciate uh the council's support in making planning, community development director, public works director and central service director appointed positions per the ordinance. With that, do council members have any question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so um do you have the um? Okay, um so I guess I'll just make a statement. Um I do not support, support the removal of the city administration, administrative, administrative position at this time. I would support not budgeting for the position in this fiscal year. But I feel you as the mayor need to prove that the system is going to work first. And so I want us to have a backup plan because it's most important to me that we take care of the taxpayers of the city. Uh so I don't want to base anything on personal opinion. You did work for the city. That was many years ago. And apparently Mayor Logan, who I respected very much at that time, thought that the city would benefit from a city administrator. I know that her opinion strongly changed and she did support you. Um but we have grown as a city. It's not the same. Um and I'd rather see the decision based upon the positions, the duties and the best interests of Sandpoint taxpayers. And not the personality of a position. And so I do support the appointment of um a utilities director. The appointment of the community, community planning director and the appointment of the central services director. Because I think it's very important for them to have some level of autonomy from the mayor. Please don't take offense by me pointing out what your profession is and how that could create it, an especially large conflict for somebody who runs the planning department if you were to disagree. I, I know you personally, so I, I'm pretty sure you would never fire anybody. But I want to ensure those individuals um that they have that type of autonomy. And if, if their opinion is strong and different, they're, they're able to voice that either here um in front of the council or in private with you and their job and livelihood is not at risk because of that. We did not discuss in our meeting um anything about the um appointment um of the attorney. Um my question to you would be, and I asked this question fondly, but I'd like clarification to know that even though we're appointing, that would include our contract.
Correct.
Would be appointed, so then they would also have that autonomy. And that by making this an appointed position, it is not necessarily to hire a single individual in-house to do that. So I just want to make sure that that is clear, that um we would just appoint for our current. We wouldn't actually be appointing anybody. We would just make them have the autonomy. So if you could speak to that.
Sure, uh to start off with, uh regarding the city administrator position, the budget reflects no city administrator. The code also will need to be tweaked slightly to remove reference to that.
If I may interrupt you, I, I discussed with legal and I was told that the code did not necessarily need to be changed at all, just because you could not budget for the position and leave it there. And then if we get halfway through this year, um and we decide we need to go out for that position, that we could go out and search for that position. We could also open the budget if necessary, or we could delay until the new budget to actually bring on the hire if we felt that it was necessary.
Sure, yep. Uh I guess I need to clarify, what I mean is right now, if you read through our code, uh there's numerous references where it references the city administrator making decisions or having authority over divisions and departments. So uh for clarity and consistency, uh if this were to pass, the city administrator position would be stripped from code. If in the future, um I don't see any um evidence or example of why we're not succeeding. But um you may be able to convince me. If the city and the council wanted to reinstate the city administrator, we have the exact portions of code. It's simply an ordinance that brings it back and remake, makes it a new appointed position. Uh I can tell you um for the next three and a half years, I have no intention of pursuing that. I love the department heads, I love the transparency, the interface, the questions, uh the direct access, the unfettered comments. The lack of an individual having the narrative over the city, uh an unelected official. So I, I love the department head structure and format, and I think we have some excellent, excellent people working for us. Um so um regarding the city attorney, um they are an existing appointed position. Uh Lake City Law is contracted for that appointment and is the appointed. Uh no proposed changes to that are in the budget or in this ordinance.
You've heard my opinion, so I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say. Um I would like to point out that um there are definitely pros and cons to both situations. And so I'm just willing to um wait a little longer. We've not even passed budget yet. Um and so I think that um although we haven't had any large problems. I, I still think there's a path to prove that um the system is going to be effective on all levels. There was a reason um why Mayor Logan went there. Because the departments over time did not work that well together. There were some other needs that needed to happen because our mayor position, as you know, now maybe just this last week. You're not here sixty hours a week. So um there's coordination, there's other things that need to happen. I just, again, want to make sure the city runs as smoothly as it can um for our taxpayers.
Sure, I appreciate that. Um council uh members, um any, so let me put that in summary. Do I, do I understand you, Councilwoman Rule, that you would support this ordinance with a, a change that would maintain the city administrators in a pointed position that's just unfilled and unbudgeted? Is that, is that the, the main gist of what you're requesting here? Okay, thank you. Uh council members, any discussion or comment on this proposed ordinance before we take public comment?
Uh Mr. Mayor, I would second, I think what uh council president just said, uh slightly for a few different reasons. I am supportive of both the, uh of all the appointments as well. I don't think the position needs to be budgeted as long as it's still there. Um I think we've given you the grace from your background and doing what you've said. I don't know how many other mayors would step in and work those ten to twelve hour days as a part-time mayor, which you did for the first, what? Seven months, six months right now? Um and one hundred percent, I appreciate that and respect that. Looking down our history, we've only had two, two-term mayors in Sandpoint's history. I do worry that we may not get a mayor with the same type of work ethic uh that you've put in so far. I do worry that we've got potential concerns. I think siloing of the departments is a real thing, especially when you're moving back to uh part-time hours. And I think that puts you in a position where you're reactive. Uh and some, and you're finding out secondary after issues and problems have already happened. This happens to me. Uh and it's happened many times over my professional career when I'm not there, even having a group of very well-qualified managers. Uh I'm often the last to find out if I'm not on site. Uh I think it opens up, it gives us a, a further opportunity if we did want to bring back a city administrator. Uh I think they provide sustainable leadership and continuity for the staff when we have changes and election changes as well. Um I do worry that we may get a department head that doesn't gel uh with the rest of the group or may bulldoze or railroad their way through into getting what they want. More so than the others, where the other staff doesn't necessarily feel uh that they can speak or are able to stand up to this particular, any particular department head. Um I am more than willing to give you the grace and the department heads and these appointments to continue moving forward. Um I think it's working right now as it is, and I'd love to see this continue working till the end of the year. Uh and maybe revisit this again as well.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Um valid.
Mister, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Joel.
A couple of things. I am switching to my phone. I, it said I logged out as a counselor. Am I, am I logged in, Melissa?
Counselor Spiero, you are.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure as a counselor, I don't know if that changes anything. Um but, but thank you very much. So I don't think I'm going to lose you guys, but if I do, I'll hop on as soon as I can. I'd like to say a couple of things. Um I agree a lot with Counselor um Dick and Council President Rule. Um I remember a few months back, you asked to show you grace, Mr. Mayor, and give you an opportunity to restructure things. To, you know, a, a new form of government, uh the original way to give you time. And I, and I believe we all showed that grace. Uh I guess I was hoping for more of a, maybe a presentation of what you've accomplished, uh employees we've retained, employees we've lost, the pros and cons. I was hoping to see something like that before uh jumping ship of a city administrative position. To Counselor Dick's point, uh you are a hard worker, there's no doubt about that, but we may not be so blessed to always have that situation. So um did that ever cross your mind, maybe presenting something like that before asking for this?
Did it cross my mind? No, I'm, I'm pretty um adamant that um department heads function for our, our city the best. I would um, I, I don't subscribe to the belief that there is siloing. I was here for eight years. I saw a lot of collaboration. I, I, I think department heads are the preferred way to run the city. It engages the council, uh it requires the council to do work and ask questions. Um and, and frankly, for the uh history of Sandpoint since nineteen oh one. We've functioned as a department head city except for all but a few years, and I think uh the proof is in the pudding. But um no, I'm happy to give you a, an update. I'll be doing one to the, the papers uh in the net coming week on the second quarter update from the mayor's office. But thanks for your comments. Um again, I, I will uh entertain any other comments from council members, if there are any.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Can we, can we go around to uh just for the, the council members haven't spoken first, just to give them a fair shot?
I didn't see any good job, so.
Schreiber, no?
No.
I, I would, I would support your organization as it is. You, you've said that it can go back if it's not working. I think it should be your choice with experience and since I have none and you're supporting this, I support you. And I guess I support this. Because you support it.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Duquette.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh Councilman Schreiber.
So what we're talking about here is changing an ordinance. And one suggestion was that we change everything except for leaving the city administrator in the ordinance. And on one hand, if we were to do that and then take it out later, we would have to go through this. If we were to take it out now and have to put it back in later, we would have to go back through this, right? Is there, from legal standpoint, is there any concerns that we should have about that?
I don't think there are any legal concerns as far as passing the ordinance and, and essentially changing your mind again and, and reasserting that the uh city administrative position, there aren't any legal concerns. There's a lot of administrative issues and, and um going through the code and just sort of, I guess, red tape, but, but no, is the short answer.
Okay, so there are lots of references to the city administrator in lots of parts of our code. I guess, would we want to move forward with removing those references? If we were to leave the city administrator as an appointed position that was unfilled, or do we want to leave those references as well?
Well, it, it brings up a, a challenge. I, I can't speak to specific examples, but there are numerous examples in our current book of code that reference duties and responsibilities and decision-making to the city administrator. And absent a city administrator, um those fall on me right now. Um I would prefer to delegate those to our department heads. For consistency.
And we can do that the same way that we have been doing that?
Yeah, it's just not as clean. Councilman Howarth, any thoughts?
I'm, I'm with Counselor uh Duquette. You ran on a platform of reforming the way that this uh city ran. Um you were elected by the people. I know you personally, you're a man of integrity. I too believe in the, in being, having access to your directors and hearing directly from them gives me greater understanding of the departments and how they work. And before joining this council, I, I can tell you there were numerous people in my circle of influence that were very disappointed in the prior structure. And therefore voted for you as you ran uh in your platform. So that said, uh I give you grace. I want this structure to work. Uh I'm fully supportive of the ordinance and the appointments that you're talking about.
Thank you, Councilman Howarth. Um with that, um did you want to um add anything, Council President Rule?
Um yes, I'd just like to point out again, um uh recognizing the position and the personality versus the personality. And my experience sitting on the council, um that um plans were made and plans sat on shelf and collected dusts. And we talked a lot about this in our strategic planning meetings as a council with the previous mayor. Many years ago, um even when Counselor Eddie and Counselor Akin sat on the dais alongside me. And that was one of our frustrations. Um and so we were hopeful at that time by having more coordination amongst the staff, that when those plans were made that there actually was some implementation that happened. And um I would not be opposed um to changing um a number of the duties if we felt it as a council necessary to return to an administrator. Because I do think that there was an imbalance of power um that occurred. So um um my thought process is not necessarily administrator in the same capacity. If we needed to get there as you go further part-time or as we experience another mayor. Again, I agree with Counselor Dick in that um I'm thinking the, not the short game, but the long game on this. If we get a mayor who is not as ethical or willing to work as hard, what happens to the city at that point? Um that's not to say that the department heads can't run it, but at some point you, you need some leadership. So that would just be what I would add in addition to that.
Yeah, I, I sincerely appreciate those comments and um that perspective. Um I'll tell you, the department heads are running it now. Um and uh I believe the council and the mayor are here to um ensure that there's accountability from the department heads and that they are reporting and executing their duties as directed by the council and mayor. So I see this change as putting more work uh on the council. Uh I do not um, you know, shy away from that. Um I'll tell you, as mayor, um you know, appointments like this do take power away from this position. And I'm taking my hands off the wheel, trusting and hiring people who are um qualified, accountable. And if they're not, um you know, they will be standing at the lectern, um you know, responding to all of us. So um, thank you. With that, um I would ask.
Just one more final comment. Part of the fact that a lot of these duties were an administrator's responsibility and the fact that they do fall upon you, I think keeps you more engaged as a mayor or our future mayors. So the, the fact that in not changing the code, it makes you more responsible for some of those duties. May well be why it has worked well to this point.
Yeah, I can see that for sure, for sure. Um, I would now, I now ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this item.
Yes, Mister Mayor, one moment, please. Amelia Boyd.
Hello, Ms. Boyd.
Again, part two. The mayor stated in your staff report, your memo, that the mayor will have operational oversight. Our mayor is an elected official who won a popularity contest. That's how all these, uh, elections go. The nature of the position is heralded by an unqualified individual who doesn't have the experience or wherewithal of how to actually run an entire organization with multiple moving pieces because it is a said popularity contest. The mayor's previous experience as the city planner has given him a glance of what it takes, but certainly doesn't qualify him as what a city administrator or city manager does. Other than a city administrator, no one is in this room is qualified to understand what it takes to keep the machine oiled, except for Wayne, and I believe he left. I've already witnessed employees five to date who have left in just over six months of figuring things out without a city administrator. I stand in front of you to tell you that more are going to leave and that is a guarantee. Why? Because your city administrator knew how to do her job during her tenure. A city administrator is a qualified professional who is responsible for overseeing the day-to-day operations of the city and directly reports to the mayor and city council. They oversee policy development, staffing and finances. If our mayor will continue to be an active elected official as he has been up to date, as opposed to our last mayor, why is it inconceivable to hire another city administrator to guide with his vision? Our mayor has also stated in his memo that future mayors will remain actively engaged in their duties without a city administrator. No one can assume that, no one can predict the future, and it is presumptuous to think that that would be the case. Since the mayor has taken office, I've witnessed broken promises and watched highly qualified professionals leave their coveted positions with the city. Some with just months from being coming vested for the retirement, some taking pay cuts and demotions, and some just plain unhappy and looking for employment elsewhere. If those of you on the dais think the otherwise, then you are living in a fairy tale. These are people's livelihoods at stake, and it is you that has the power to hire a city administrator or keep it on and deny the mayor his proposal. We have saved almost $2 million in the budget from not being a part of the JPA. The funds are there, so be a part of the solution and not part of the problem. I was directed to be careful with my comments, and as you all know, that the former, uh, city administrator was a dear friend, is a dear friend of mine. And that has nothing to do with it, it just, it is with insight. I have friends that work in the city. Um, I've heard things that are disturbing for me, and I think that the public and you all should be aware that it is not all sunshine and roses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
That is all, Mister Mayor.
All right, I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passes its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
Mister Mayor. I will need to read that, uh, title first.
Oh, thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title One, Chapter Six, Sections One and Two, providing for appointed city officers and their terms, providing for severability and providing for publication and an effective date.
I would now entertain a motion that the ordinance passes its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Howarth, second by Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule.
Oh, I do have a question. The, um, ordinance change, I'm sorry, I thought that was off. It creates the, um, positions for the community development director. Creates the appointments. So this is all wrapped up into the same. No, it is not.
This establishes these, reestablishes them as appointed positions as they had been prior to the previous administration. Subsequent, if this passes, there are two actions to appoint, uh, Jason Welker as Planning Community Development Director and Cheryl as Central Services Director.
Correct, but is the dissolution of the administrative position wrapped into this? That's what I'm trying to parse.
Yes, that, that very first line on the screen.
Good, all right.
Which is also
clear.
Also reflected in the, the preliminary budget that's been brought to you.
Yes, I understand that piece of it.
Uh, roll call vote, so I believe it's your vote, Counselor.
Uh, Mister Mayor.
Uh, uh, go ahead, Councilman, um, Spear.
Yeah, um, uh, Councilman Rule, are, are you discussing, are, are you trying to say we're just voting on, uh?
The ordinance is presented.
Passing this, yeah, yeah, and then we'll be able to just, just discuss it further, correct?
Um, no, if the vote passes, uh, there's a motion on the table. We're now in a roll call vote. Uh, depending on what happens on the vote, uh, there's opportunity for discussion or not.
Great, I just want to make sure I have a sock in my nose, because I got a bloody nose with Noah, well, driving, so apologize, missed a little bit, so. Okay, so, all right, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mister Mayor, if I can clarify as well, I, I believe we're pa, we're voting on the ordinance right now. So, Ms., Ms., Counselor Aspira, I want to make sure you understand that as well. You're, you are voting on the passage of the ordinance right now.
So, uh, it is a roll call vote, Councilwoman Rule, did you vote? I'm sorry.
No, I did not. Um, I would just like to state that, um, I would have preferred that this was separated into a different action so we could vote more individually upon it. But because I feel so strongly about the autonomy of, um, our, um, department head positions that, um, I will vote yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
No. The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion, the rules requiring three separate readings, once the ordinance is entitled to be suspended, the ordinance passed its second, third reading under suspension of the rules. So it'll be a roll call vote.
Their motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, uh, motion by, motion by Schreiber, second by, uh, Duquette.
Thank you. Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
No.
Counselor Sprow?
Um, you guys might lose me for a couple of minutes, but yeah, yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
It's, uh, ma, motion passes, the ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted and resumption of the rules will become effective following publication summary in the newspaper. I will now entertain a motion to confirm appointment of Jason Welker as Community Planning and Development Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Rule. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
I will now entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Cheryl Hughes as Central Services Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Rule, second by Dick. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yeah.
I think that was a yes.
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
Council members, thank you. Uh, next we will review, uh, the city's proposed fiscal year 2025 budget followed by adoption of the preliminary budget. Council will also consider, uh, declaring its intent to use foreground levying authority and the annual budget, the public hearing will be scheduled. Uh, with that, Sarah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Ca, um, City Council. Um, tonight, you have in front of you the preliminary budget. Um, tonight, we're going to, um, ask you to, uh, approve the maximum level of expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, that can, and this cannot exceed the, um, which cannot be exceeded by city council in the future. Upon the preliminary budget, the, um, you also set a date for the public hearing. We are proposing August 21st, um, of '24 to be that date. Um, I wanted to just, um, hit a few key items tonight, and then also tonight I wanted to, um, have a, um, um, also show you a quick summary of how you can navigate within the budget book and then also go through capital plans. Um, Holly and Eric and Maeve are also here to help, um, um, present those to you. Um, in, um, in addition, next council meeting, just go down here. There will be a, um, a budget workshop and then also, um, the, um, the public hearing will be on the August 21st, will actually accept the budget. So cue, few cue, um, a few key items I wanted to point out is that the total budget has, um, decreased from the prior year by about, um, $2.5 million. The majority of that is related to the, um, dissolution of the JPA. And, um, the, there's nuances within the different, um, funds. And I want to get into that, we'll probably get into that not tonight, but we'll do that at the budget workshop and then also at the final budget hearing. I'll get into much more detail on that. The budget also includes a 2% market adjustment for employees and, um, going down here, there are a few, um, departments that have been, um, either consolidated. As the mayor had, um, had mentioned, the, um, city administration budget, um, that has gone, has been removed. And then also the, um, there's a few other ones that are noted in here that have either one rolled up into other ones. Um, so they, um, again, those will be things that we talk about next week, uh, our next council meeting in detail. The, um, property taxes, there is new construction role. This, um, valuation is about $58 million. That's about double what we've seen in the last couple of years. There is, I think, what we all have seen across town, so that's not surprising. And then also the budget book, man, I want to slip over to the budget book now, but that has, was released on the website on Friday. So, yep, and so here on the website, you can find it in two places, either one underneath this finances tab or down under here, under our news and announcements, the very first one scrolling here. I'm going to quickly go through this and then turn it over for this, um, capital improvement, um, presentation here. Um, we, the navigation in here under the introduction, you can see the letter from the mayor here and the transmittal letter. And then going down here, there's, um, just definitions, strategic plan, financial policies, the basis of budgeting. Um, a bunch of details, just if you want to dig into that. Also, the budget overview. Um, we'll show the budget overview process. There's personnel changes that will show, um, what's been added, what's been removed. Um, again, we'll get into all that de, that detail next, next, um, meeting. The fund summaries, there are three different classifications of governmental funds. Property, proprietary funds or which are enterprise funds or water, sewer, um, mostly like a business type funds and then also fiduciary funds. We'll get into that in detail, um, later as well. And then, um, funding sources, this is where you can find the property taxes. There's a lot of information under these tabs, especially the property taxes of, uh, what it is, what's in there, and then graphs and, um, all sorts of different stuff. One thing I do want to note is that the, um, market values do not, are not released until tomorrow, so there will be, um, updates once we get that. Um, we really don't know, um, I mean, you can kind of guess when you get your own tax bill what it's going to be, but, um, until we actually get that final file, um, they do, um, it will change our property tax amount, not by much, but it does change it. Um, updates in the property tax, um, area, once we get that.
Sarah, we're waiting on Bonner County to deliver.
Yes, correct. That is by state law released in the third Thursday of, um, July, so that's tomorrow. And then, um, underneath the department and divisions, this is the new structure of the city in line with the, um, the org chart that is also found underneath the introduction over here, organization chart, um, departments and divisions. And then underneath each one of these is the different, um, divisions within that department. Again, the, all those presentations will be next, um, council meeting. The last but not least, the one we're going to cover tonight is the capital, um, the capital improvement plans. And, um, I just wanted to click on it to show you that in, within here, you can see they're organized into street projects, which we'll go through first. Um, engineering projects, which are comprehensive projects that actually go across multiple divisions. Um, so in other words, if they have a street and a water and a sewer, um, component, they're considered in this, in this, um, area here. Then we have water capital projects. And then we have wastewater capital projects, a general, general government, and then police and parks and maintenance capital projects. And then least, but not, last but not least is the fire department request. Um, when you're in this book, the navigation is, you can actually click, I'm just going to click on this one to show you. And then you can actually, if you do have additional questions, you can see the request owner up here, and that's who we have, um, will direct, um, your questions to on the specific capital projects. So I will turn the, turn over the floor to Holly and Eric.
And, and Holly, before you begin, and Eric, um, council members, uh, staff have put a lot of time into this. I hope, uh, you, you, I know many of you have taken the time to, uh, ask great questions. What I love about this is council's really getting into the weeds of it and, um, uh, just appreciate staff for all the time they put into preparing this, uh, budget on that website. So, uh, with that, Holly and Eric, take it away, inform us or inform the council of what we hope to do.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Council. Holly Ellis, Construction Manager.
Uh, Eric Bush, Construction Manager.
And, uh, we're gonna be going kind of back and forth. Hopefully that's not too annoying for you. We kept it in order of what's presented in the budget, so we'll go through streets first, wastewater projects and water. Um, just kind of popping back and forth.
And, and contrary to what Sarah just described, um, the projects under the engineering division in the, um, paper you have, um, we have those under our streets, um, in our presentation. Same meaning, we just organize them a little differently is all.
Okay, so the first project for discussion, Bridge Street Bridge Rehabilitation, um, on the screen in front of you. A brief description of the project, the funding source and map, those are all pulled directly from ClearGov and the budget that you're, is in front of you. Um, so this project is, it will, uh, construct structural rehabilitation of our Bridge Street Bridge and which is our bridge across Sand Creek, uh, which leads to City Beach. And, uh, this project is funded by the General Fund. We have $720,000. This is just for construction, so right now we have engineering efforts and our plan is in next fiscal year to do construction. Uh, just some brief overview and pictures for you. There's, these are pictures of our beautiful bridge. Uh, what we're rehabbing are the shell piles that are at part of the substructure. Every two years, ITD does an assessment and they identified that our substructure is in fair condition. So we engaged Keller and Associates to, um, he, help us, uh, in our rehab so that we can keep our bridge in good shape. We have broader plans to replace this bridge, uh, but this is kind of our, our Band-Aid to get us through the next 10 years. Uh, the lower right picture is a picture of the pier and you can see it's starting to rust. And then the bottom picture on the right is our, uh, rehab method where we'll actually go in, apply an adhesive and a wrap around each pier to keep it in, uh, better condition and preserve the bridge.
Um, and moving over to, um, a streets project, but also a, you know, larger scale project. Um, uh, we're coming up on, um, implementing downtown phase three, uh, downtown revitalization phase three, excuse me. Um, and implementing was the wrong word. We have, we are not, um, uh, at the level of going to construction soon. Uh, we're at the level of going through design soon, which will, construction will follow that. Um, the, uh, slider on the bottom of your screen that has the kind of three different headings, um, that tells you what stage of the process we're in right now. Um, so both of, there's two blue, dark blue ones in, in this project in particular because, um, the master planning phase has already been done. We know that we're coming up on, you know, a downtown phase three. Uh, we're really in the engineering phase and I'm, uh, in the process of drafting an RFQ to, um, go out for, uh, engineering services, uh, design services for downtown phase three right now. Um, and that, uh, this budget that is before you here at, um, 775,000 would cover that, um, design phase as well as, uh, likely a portion of the construction. Um, the budget that we are presenting tonight does not cover future year construction needs. Um, those will come at future years. Um, we're only covering, you know, what we're doing in fiscal year 2025. So if you see some of the numbers and they seem artificially low, um, based on the scale of the project, it's because we're perhaps, um, you know, talking about design right now, not the construction piece of the project. Um, the, the photos on the right-hand side of your screen here are from, uh, downtown revitalization phase two. Um, that is, uh, it's a very intensive project and we will be making a mess um, in the short term of downtown. Um, but of course it's for good service for, um, you know, the remainder of downtown being, um, revitalized like phases one and two.
And, uh, Eric, I just point out that project is being funded by Erman Renewal. Um, we don't know how far it will go. Um, we don't know how far it will go, um, if it'll go all the way to, um, it's superior. Um, the, some of that is determined on Urban Renewal's collections, which are also impacted by the valuation and the sale of such as building eight of the seasons. Um, so, um, as, as those units come online, the projections are, um, you know, we, we, Eric Paul from Urban Renewal has a projection of their collections, um, so the ultimate collections will determine how far this project goes. Uh, Urban Renewal sunsets in twenty twenty nine. At that time, we will, uh, have a bump of eighty percent of the whole value of that Urban Renewal, uh, district coming to our general funds, so. Um, and, and the other taxing districts that Urban Renewal is capturing. So I, I just wanted to point out that we don't know how far phase three will go down. First Ave, uh, we're going to take it as far as we can and hopefully all the way down to Superior. Um, and I'll also, uh, point out that, um, this is looking at that downtown waterfront, um, report for direction. Um, their phase one in that report kind of focuses on this section of first Ave. So, um, they will be looking at that and taking direction and guidance from that, uh, report.
Uh, sorry.
Answered my question.
Ontario Street realignment. So this project is in our multimodal transportation plan. Uh, it will acquire right of way at design and construct the realignment of Ontario, making it a more perpendicular intersection with the highway. We have six hundred thousand dollars in impact fees. Uh, and we do have an aggressive schedule trying to get planning, engineering, design and construction in the next fiscal year. I will say we're also working with I T D, hoping, hoping that there's an opportunity for partnership as, uh, this concept is in one of their plans as well. It's not in their, um, current programming, uh, but fingers crossed we can make something work. And here is the concept I spoke to, so you can see the realignment of Ontario is in orange. Teeing up those intersections, creating better visibility at those intersections for drivers. And the crosswalks for pedestrians will also be teed up as well. Again, better visibility and shorter crossing distances for pedestrians.
Um, moving back into sidewalk and bike path projects, um, we have a, uh, kind of a running list of identified pedestrian priority network. Uh, that comes out of our council adopted multimodal transportation. Um, this project would be, I apologize, wasn't speaking into the microphone. Um, this project would be the next phase of, of those, uh, projects that have been going on for a handful of years now. Um, the, uh, upcoming project would be along Fourth Avenue, um, south of Superior. Um, likely to Pacific, but it could be expanded if there was additional need, uh, further south to the lake. Um, or perhaps to make a connection over to the Third Street Pier, um, if that was appropriate. Um, the typically, uh, in the past two years, I would say we have been funding our sidewalk improvement projects from the Resort City Tax. Um, and we're still doing that. Um, the budget that's in front of you here, um, in the chart shows additional funding as well. And, um, those are, uh, you know, additional flexibility we have to complete sidewalk projects.
And one, one other point of clarity in there, um, that sidewalk budget is also for our in-lu fees that Brandon collects in private development. Um, so I think he uses those on more local spots versus our capital projects. Um, and there's also a little bit of money in here for our match on our tap grant that we received for the Boyer sidewalk project.
Um, and for clarification, uh, what Holly was referencing, um, Brandon and with the in-lu fees, we have the ability to take care of, uh, perhaps a, you know, ADA ramp that has failed, um, in an area if I need examples like that where it's, uh, you know, we don't need a large scale project intervention at a specific location, maybe we just need to fix something. Um, and that gives us the flexibility to do, you know, perhaps a ten thousand dollar fix as opposed to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar larger project.
Question? Um, uh, so you spoke to sidewalks, um, what about pathways?
We, we do not currently have, um, beyond the sidewalks project, um, I budgeted pathways project beyond, beyond what is, you know, before you.
So for clarity, this budget line is our sidewalk project that we pull from the lot, our Resort City Tax money. So we had seven projects that we've committed to completing. This is our big capital project. And then the other one is the, uh, tap grant, which is sidewalk on Boyer, no pathways.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Still holding out for that piece on Boyer. Out there by, uh, I don't even know, by the airport.
All right. Circle it, let me know.
You know which one I'm talking about. Well, it's come up in discussion before and I think I've asked to have it on the radar. And I know you guys have it in your notes, but this might just not be the year that that's happening. So, um, what is that street where the new developments are?
Uh, Mountain View.
Mountain View. So the one just past Mountain View to complete the pathway.
I know.
Going north.
Yep, yep.
Where the fence is.
The gap, yes.
The gap.
On the east side of Boyer, north of Mountain View, yes.
We have, we have a, uh, uh, transportation alternative grant in the works for that.
Okay, so we have discussed this, all right.
Yes.
Okay. Where does that, it's just a grant, so it's not in here necessarily as a project because we don't know.
It's a grant. We haven't been awarded the grant officially, so we don't have those contracts. Our plan is that we would start design next fiscal year, so that's what we have budgeted is just the design match for that grant, which is very minimal.
Okay, but we're still moving forward on that. It, okay, great. That's all. I was curious, just felt like that was part of this discussion, so.
Yeah, it's a very, I think it's going to be seven percent of fifty thousand dollars, so super tiny, but thanks for highlighting that, because it was a
Forward progress.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Cedar Street Reconstruction. So this is a project that we are actively in design right now with H M H Engineering. They're engaged in there, working on contract documents, targeting to get us final plans before the end of this year. Um, this plan will reconstruct Cedar Street from Division to Lincoln Avenue. Improvements will include, include new pavement and upsized water main, replacing other aging service lines such as sewer and water lines. New curb and gutter drainage improvements and landscaping improvements, along with new sidewalk. Um, this project has, is largely funded by our general fund. Um, but water and wastewater, uh, departments are also paying their proportionate share. So the water fund is, is, um, funding the water main replacement and then they're also, uh, funding the rehab above the trench of the water main. Uh, so this is just construction and our, the estimate right now, or our budget, excuse me, is one point nine million dollars.
And on this project, Holly, just for a moment, you know, this was anticipated to be a multi-phase project and I, I just, um, want to thank Sarah and the team because I said, let's, let's get this done. Like it's the worst street and one of the worst streets in Sandpoint and let's just knock it out. So they were able to, uh, prioritize the street in, in this capital improvement plan. So, uh, I look forward to having a complete street, uh, in some sense completed in twenty five, so.
Absolutely. And I'll say this project has been around since I've been here and we never took it on because we never had the budget. So, uh, being able to do this is pretty incredible.
Um, so moving into, uh, Great Northern, um, the, uh, budget that's before you here shows four point nine million dollars. But that budget has a huge caveat in that, uh, we are awaiting response on our grant application that we submitted in May. Uh, we expect a response, uh, sometime in September, but, uh, there's no formal response date. So it kind of, um, you know, it may be September, hopefully it's September one, but I doubt it. Um, it, I wouldn't be surprised if it rolled into October and one day I just get a ping in my email that, you know, hopefully is a grant award. Um, but kind of an F Y I, the, the budget does not reflect, um, you know, it reflects what we have as dedicated city funding. It does not reflect what we could have if we are successful in one of these grants. Um, additionally, the, uh, second grant that council approved, um, us to apply for is now open. Um, and we're, um, putting together our, uh, working on putting together our package for that as well. Um, and that grant closes and we have, I believe about six weeks, maybe eight weeks, so we have lots of time to put our package together.
Do we need another congressional letter of support and from the governor on that?
I, I will check. I'm not sure if we can, uh,
It's the same one.
Sort of reuse or if we need to identify a new, I, I will let you know as soon as I find out.
So, um, I, I, does this mean this could be less if you get the grants, this expenditure?
This is based on us getting the grant.
This is what it would cost.
I guess the question is if we didn't get either of these grants, we, we collectively will have, um, some decisions to make on where to direct, uh, those general fund dollars.
And, and, uh, Councilor Duquette, the, um, the funding that we're, that is shown in before you here, um, would constitute our match to our grant if we are awarded, um, and that would be, uh, a roughly twenty percent match.
So if you don't get the grant.
We're going to have a discussion about where do we put three point eight million dollars?
Okay.
Which roads or?
Okay.
Wherever you want to.
Kind of, I guess that's what I was doing.
Yeah.
Means we might have money.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, this, there's an additional drawing before you. This came out of our multimodal transportation plan, um, from twenty twenty. But our, our, our design has changed very minimally, um, from this drawing. Um, this one is just a very digestible version, um, to read that shows you, you know, the future profile. Uh, with respect to bike lanes, a, uh, large median strip and a, um, uh, road separated, uh, multimodal trail as well. Um, I will provide the caveat that, um, this and all of our other projects we're discussing are a lot more robust than we can cover in three or five minutes. Um, if anyone would like to know more, please let us know and I'll tell you. Uh, I'll talk to you forever until you're bored of me and want to, want to leave. Um, ad- additionally, we have some, uh, what I might call more miscellaneous type street projects. And, uh, miscellaneous does not cover the, um, uh, uh, importance of these projects. Um, one that I am currently working on that we have in design right now is, uh, redevelopment of our downtown parking lot. Um, that would, would not be budgeted in fiscal year twenty five dollars. Um, that would be funded via Sura dollars. Um, but that, it's an additional project that we are working on that we wanted to highlight. Um, and we're, um, um, our engineer is underway and we're shooting for, um, wrapping up design and construction this fall. So, um, fingers crossed we'll have a, uh, parking lot in far better condition, uh, towards the end of the year. Um, the other, uh, uh, important project to highlight is, um, the Bridge Street Sidewalk and, um, the Bacon Parcel on the north side of Bridge Street, East of First. Um, Council President Rule, I think, uh, mentioned this project earlier. Um, we, um, have, uh, Welsh Comer Engineers, uh, preparing a second concept for us on a, um, a wall that would allow us to widen our sidewalk to the width we need. Um, so we, they provided us one concept and we wanted an additional version to, um, you know, review and see which was the proper path to take. Um, once we do that, um, and, and kind of decide with, uh, Mayor Grim on which, which path we would like to go. Uh, we'll be me- meeting with that landowner and seeing, uh, what sort of collaboration we can have between our improvements and, um, what he plans to do with, with that parcel.
Quick question on that one. I don't see, uh, that listed in the, the budget book. Could, do you have a rough estimate of cost on that one?
Um, I, I do have some rough, rough estimates of cost, but it's, uh, hugely caveated being that we are, um, uh, trying to, you know, maintain our public access is the big point here. Um, the, the funding and depending on how, uh, robust of a, a solution we have could come from various sources. Um, Jeremy, would you, Mayor Grim, would you like to?
Yeah, we have a cash, uh, cash and new, or maybe it's cash bond, maybe it's actual cash from the developers. I, I don't know the history of it, but somewhere with the property sale and trade, um, I think we have about two hundred and seventy thousand, um, that we're sitting on. Uh, of the developer's money or the landowner's money that, um, is part of that trade or that probably has a better understanding of how it went down, but, um,
No, I remember they were supposed to put something in along Gunning's Alley and they did.
So, well, um, there was, yeah, we were given more right of way there sidewalk that was supposed to be um, forthcoming as that building was built, but it seems in my impression, we're between a rock and a hard place until that there's a building of some sort there, the support for sidewalk doesn't exist. So that two hundred and seventy thousand dollars doesn't do us a lot of good to add it until we have something, you know, you can't float the sidewalk in the ear. It's not the Jetsons unfortunately.
So, so what we're looking at right now is C M U large, uh, retaining wall that would go in where those, uh, sheet pilings are now. And then complete sidewalk with a railing. And we're also talking with the property owner. He has expressed, uh, sincere interest to activate the site, maybe with a stairs that go down into it and make it a plaza, but we're, we're just waiting for the engineering on, on the cost estimates for, um, using the money that we have from the developer or the property owner right now.
My understanding is we would have, we were given more right of way past those pilings too, so that the sidewalk would be larger.
Yeah.
Which is impossible this way and I was just there last night and it's quite a cluster.
Yeah, that's where they're looking at these big C M U, the cement, you know, retaining wall that would go up the full length of the sidewalk with a railing, so no one falls.
And the pilings would come out? Okay.
Yeah, it counts the president rule, uh, the current sheet pile wall that is there is on, uh, Sandpoint's property.
Um, right, that's my understanding, but.
So, uh, part of, uh, and, and why we have our engineers working on two separate concepts was we were trying to see if we could maximize our dollars to actually improve the sidewalk. Um, so we were looking at one version that was, uh, not a full length wall along that parcel on Bridge Street. Um, the idea being that we may be able to, um, uh, get our, the appropriate sidewalk width we need. Um, via, uh, basically reducing our lane width in that area. Um, and the other option that we are, um, uh, evaluating is a full length wall that would, would allow us to build a appropriate width sidewalk, um, on, on the property line, uh, with, you know, between Sandpoint and the private property as opposed to on Sandpoint's property line or within Sandpoint's property.
It's a complicated thing without a building foundation.
Right.
So, and, and we're, we're trying to not, um, you know, in the short term, create a solution that would, um, uh, minimize the developability of that parcel. So, well, you know, there's a, it seems really simple, but there's a reason why we're taking our time and we're not taking our time. It just takes time to make sure we get this right, right now.
Yeah, simple in this project, not in the same sentence or paragraphed or manual. Anyway, thank you.
More question?
Yeah.
Um, is this going to be integrated with the downtown revitalization phase three? Cause that was my understanding was that this intersection was already going to be rebuilt as part of that. So this is a separate project that's.
It, it's a separate project to, um, increase our public access right now. You know, if you are downtown and you're trying to walk to City Beach, it's currently really difficult to do that. Um, so in the short term, we want to improve that access. In the long term, we will be evaluating as a part of downtown phase three, the, um, um, availability and ability to, um, you know, re- redevelop that intersection or look at that intersection differently, traffic flows, all those sorts of things.
The reason I'm asking all of this, um, Holly and I had had a conversation last fall very briefly about the rationale for the, the waterfront design competition having a brand new bridge. And there was some confusion that the mayor is aware of that the state's report recommended replacing that bridge, not because it was, uh, crumbling so badly that it couldn't be repaired, but because it's not up to current standards. And in terms of width, is that correct?
Uh, the report I recall was the inspection report, um, and the criticality of the, the failure, the replacement. Um, if where you're going is, what are the opportunities for future bridge replacement, realignment and other things? Uh, we have an open mind to it. If the property owner wanted to look at a, a more direct alignment, um, that would come to the council for discussion. Um, but, um, right now the goal is just to shore up, um, the, the right of way. Build a wall at the existing property line with the, the property owner's money, not our money. Oh, well, it was a trade. Um, and, uh, you know, shore that up until we can complete the first Ave, phase three.
So my point is, and, and the, the conversation that we had several months ago was that, um, if the bridge need to be replaced anyway, um, rather than spending the money to repair the current bridge, why not rebuild a better bridge? And as bridges age, they cost more and more in maintenance costs. And so when you tally up those maintenance costs plus the cost of inflation on a inflation on a future bridge replacement, you might actually be saving money by by replacing it sooner than perhaps it was obvious to replace.
Yep.
And when we look at, what was it, seven hundred and seventy?
Yep.
Seven hundred and twenty for the, just to to put a Band-Aid on it. And then whatever portion of the downtown revitalization phase three, and then maybe another quarter million from moving these pylons a couple of feet, only for them to be removed again if and when this ever gets developed. That puts us over a million dollars towards replacing a bridge and realigning it so that we eliminate these problems that we're talking about with pedestrians and vehicles, boat, car, trucks pulling boats, trying to make a right and then a left on a church street. I just wanted to bring up that point as we talk about the budget that if we're gonna be spending a third of the way to a new bridge, maybe we should also be considering a new bridge.
Yeah, I think those are great points, Councilman Schreiber. I believe a new bridge is gonna be in excess of ten million dollars. You know, looking at the alignment, we're not gonna do anything, you know, you'll you'll be briefed if we do anything. The the piling work sounds like it's a Band-Aid, but it helps get us through a few more years. Obviously, you know, infrastructure bill was live over the past few years, there was lots of bridge money. I think we're gonna have to react to the national federal funding, see what happens this fall. If there's money available, I think it's worth looking at and chasing, but it sounds like the seven hundred thousand one, we've already spent money on the design and the process to wrap those and epoxy them, the pilings. And it sounds like that's gonna get us at least bring it up to higher standards for the next couple of years, ten years. But before we do anything on the whole and the sidewalk, I will bring it to council's tension and get your direction.
Sure. Has there been any discussion about the need to bring the bridge dimensions up to to current standards with the addition of a conference center and a bigger hotel on the other side of that bridge with the only access to that being this bridge?
You know, I'd have to get back to you on that. There, Brandon, and there is gonna be a more in-depth traffic impact study. I don't know what that's gonna spell out at this point. But.
Thanks.
Good questions.
Moving to wastewater projects, briefly mentioned that we recently adopted our sewer collection master plan. And we also recently did a utility rate study, so these projects were in alignment with those. The first project is INI reduction, so INI is inflow and infiltration. Infiltration is groundwater entering our sewer system and inflow is stormwater entering our sewer system. And they're both clean water, once that clean water enters our sewer system, it's no longer clean. It goes to our wastewater treatment plant, so our wastewater treatment plant is working overtime. Our wastewater treatment plant sees ten times the amount of flow because of INI. So our, we have an effort every year to try to reduce INI. Next year's is looking at lateral connections. So that is the point where the lateral enters the sewer main. We have a lot of broken laterals in town. Our crews did a really large effort to identify those, list those, they're identified in our facility plan. So they'll be going around cutting the street, patching the, repairing that connection to reduce this inflow and infiltration, ultimately to reduce our our rates for sewer. We have three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars budgeted. The sewer lateral connections will be our project for next year. Late this fall, so it will be this fiscal, this FY twenty five, we'll do our manhole, our manhole will just be a lining, our contractor is gonna go in there and coat the projects. But it's kind of a, an over, a rollover. So some of this budget is gonna be for a manhole lining and the other piece is for the lateral connections.
And the manhole lining, those are rings and you you put like a grout in the rings, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, it's totally, we're not replacing the manholes, it's it's called spray rock. So the contractors will go, it's on Fifth Avenue, so you'll hear much when we get to that point. Also why we're doing this later in the year, once the traffic has reduced off Fifth Avenue. So you'll see a contractor in the manhole spraying the spray rock and they'll have to kind of wait for it to set before we can allow flows back through the manhole.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
So I had two comments. One is this is what a lot of the previous councils have been working on in progressing towards the new sewer treatment plant with trying to decrease the flows so that we would know which, what size sewage treatment plant to build. So this is one of the things that we had been working on. And then I just have to say, this is just one of my favorite pictures and I think it should just be posted all over everywhere and we should have a big piece of art at the new sewer treatment plant that looks like that.
We can get you one for your office if you want.
And and I'll just expand on that and speaking with the engineers, I've had a couple perspectives that we've been working on this a long time, which is one of the reasons many of our streets look and feel the way they do, because all the, every time they fix one of these, there's a cut. But it's a diminishing return, you know, one engineer said unless you're gonna go into every house and see this foundation drain here and literally smoke test and go into everyone's basement, you're you're only gonna achieve so much to this and I'm never gonna send our people into people's basements to, you know, inspect their their basement. So it's diminishing return, but the thinking on the new wastewater plant is you build an equalization tank so that these, when you do get these periods of high flow, it hits a buffer, a multi-million gallon tank, and then the plant can process it. So you're not building a plant to process twelve million gallons a day, because our summertime flows are a tenth of that or a ninth of that. You're building a plant that can absorb high flows, but at the same time then process that. So this INI project, obviously, we need to be thoughtful of it as we start to invest in our roads, because we certainly don't want to put a new road down and and go and fix a bunch of laterals or have them break. So the team is working to coordinate that to make sure we're thinking through it.
I think maybe you misinterpreted what I was saying. We were also talking about just the main sewer, not necessarily the connections and other people's laterals. I'm well aware of all those pieces, but the main laterals can collapse the roads if there's enough leakage, let alone just cutting a hole to fix something. So that's what I was referring to, not not necessarily the laterals project.
And just to add, when we do our road projects, our, for for example, that we'll do this late summer, early fall, we're replacing all of the laterals that are aging. So when we do pave a road, we attempt to improve our utilities with it so that we're not going back and doing cuts later.
One quick question along that same line of thinking, just kind of occurred to me that perhaps we could do education instead of going into people's basements. But also, as you're replacing these, and now obviously would not be the time of year to do it, but in the springtime, perhaps you could scope and take note of where clean water was a steady stream coming from a lateral and then maybe speak to the homeowner and say, hey, we we know that you're contributing to this problem. I don't know if there could be funding to help homeowners.
Disconnect or something, yeah.
Or, yeah, just remedy the problem, whether it's a cracked lateral or whether they do have a foundation drain that's attached to it illegally or maybe they just need a sump pump.
Yep, good thinking.
Mayor, if I might, historically, we have educated and we actually found a lot of roof drains. I think a significant number of the buildings on First Avenue were putting their roof drains right into the sewer systems. And there was at one point throughout all the pieces of sewer treatment plant and figuring out the direction we were going. There was some educational pieces that were put out, it was probably before you moved here to remind people that they can't put their sump pumps into their drains, that all has to just go out. So always more, I agree, more and more and more, because more people have moved here that may not know that are in an older house, et cetera, and so forth, and I'm sure that they are probably handling that still, so.
And it it's important to note that as a part of INI reduction, it it's not something that ever goes away, because you have a significant amount of infrastructure and especially in Sandpoint, we have soils that don't really want to have things built on them or things in them and maintain them in their location. Our soils move a lot, which is hard on infrastructure, rigid pipes, you know, when soil moves around them, they move as well and they do it by breaking or by various means of, you know, voids, which encourages INI. So it it certainly is improved by the presence of a new wastewater facility, it allows the facility to handle it, but it is something that we always have to do as infrastructure degrades. Moving into lift stations, this, the status should really be kind of split between engineering, construction. We'll be out to bid next month on this project. And this is for two lift stations, one at City Beach and one along Superior between First Avenue and Iberian Way. This is down as you're coming into town, if you're coming off ninety five by the two gas stations there, it's just west of the gas stations on the south side of Superior. We have been underway in design for about a year and we're getting really close. We'll be out to bid next month, like I said. And we will also be, as a part of this project, implementing our new SCADA system for these two lift stations and I will give you a little more detail on SCADA here in a second. But this image on the right here is our construction layout for the City Beach Lift Station. This is immediately past the bridge. When you come in, this is directly kind of in front of the campground. If you're going back to the campground, you would pass this location. We're providing, we're installing some plant materials here to screen this facility. Most of the facility is underground, you can't see it, but we do have a generator and some panels that will be located. So we're installing some plant materials as a part of this project because we're on City Beach and we want to make sure we're, you know, not providing, showing, you know, people a lift station, right? When they come onto City Beach, they can see something a little bit more attractive than that.
And Eric, is that designed with the awareness of the future hotel?
It is, we we've been accounting for that, their flows and their their needs this entire process.
Well done.
I'm sorry, can you?
Well done.
So moving into wastewater SCADA, this is a project that Adam, our IT manager, is primarily working on. But he was unable to be here this evening. SCADA is a really complicated term for how how our managers, Rod and his crew, are able to manage a wastewater system or a water system in the right context. It allows them remote access and a far more secure system, as you've probably seen. You know, recently, there's various sort of hacking attempts on water and wastewater facilities. This new technology will give us a buffer against that. So the SCADA is actually being implemented right now. They're doing, I think Adam told me about two a week, it, once they're, once they're fully ramped up, they've completed one so far. And as they're kind of figuring out their process, they'll be doing about two a week. And so that is on our existing lift stations and and facilities throughout town, not just lift stations, also our water treatment facilities and 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 the like. So it's being implemented right now, it's going very well. We have B and E Electric is our team that is implementing that project and they're doing a fantastic job communicating and implementing. They they are experts in this, so we're lucky to have them on our team here.
Wastewater Treatment Plant Reconstruction, this project will begin the design for reconstruction of the wastewater treatment facility. Funding is entirely from the Wastewater Fund. This is just planning efforts which are underway right now. We're engaging an engineering firm to develop a preliminary engineering report, which picks up our facility plan and will really get us well positioned for design, it's kind of the start of design. So that is the plan and the budget for our wastewater treatment plan next year. Water projects, these projects are in alignment with our water system master plan. And again, we recently updated, we had a rate study and these projects are in alignment. I actually just listed a few highlights from our Water Capital projects. We have several smaller sized projects, but just a few highlights, Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant Rehab. This is a project that we put out to bid a couple of months ago. We got one, we only had one bid and our bid was very over budget. And so we're going back and we're, we're not redesigning, but we have a different approach to putting this project out. We had a approach, we had a project with a large scale scope and it was a bit awkward, I think, for one contractor to do that work, so we're splitting it into multiple packages. We're still going to deliver the work. Our hope is that we can still deliver it within budget, but we're doing it in pieces. We are targeting FY twenty five construction. We do not want to take our water treatment plant down in the summer, which is why we're delaying it to the fall, winter months for this rehab, so more to come on that. Our water main project for next year will be on Woodland Drive between Great Northern and Boyer Road. This will replace the Coal Tar Line main along that portion. This is just going to, or this will be planning, design and construction efforts. The final project on here, it's a big ticket item, it's a rollover project, our water treatment generators. This is a project that's in our FY twenty four budget. Our water treatment plant generator that we ordered hasn't been delivered. I think they're anticipating May of two thousand and twenty five, so this is a rollover project. And I will hand it off to Maeve.
Hey, you're here.
And Maeve will be talking about her capital projects and then I will be back up towards the end for a different portion.
Good evening.
Thought you were on Zoom earlier, so.
I was and I am, but we have everything loaded here. So again, my name is Maeve Nevins-Lauter, I'm the Park Planning and Development Manager. For tonight's purposes, we're looking at the funding that's going to be the new funding. So to be clear in the budget book, there is funding that is getting rolled over for the the travels, Traverse projects. Those are projects that are already in the works and will be concluded at the end of this year, as in hopefully by Thanksgiving. But some of that funding will be paid for, some of those accounts will be paid for in the fiscal year twenty twenty five. So there's no real change in the overall budget of those, it's just how we allocate per fiscal cycle. So for this this new project coming in, the intent is to utilize the Parks Capital Improvement Fund of three hundred thousand and match it with another grant application for the Land Water Conservation Fund. We also have unofficial commitments from various user groups, including the pondery peddlers and the potential for some softball and baseball groups. So we, we've been looking at what can we do at Traverse to basically put a ribbon on it for next year. So these are projects that we started essentially two years ago, they were priorities in the Park Master Plan. The first one is to renovate the existing tennis courts and the associated landscaping located to the south. It's the area, sort of the buffer, if you will, between the skate park and the existing tennis courts. We started that project last year, we did, or this past year, we did an entire shovel ready plan, so we're ready to go with that. And the idea would be that we would leverage that portion of the Land Water Conservation Fund and get the construction done next year. And then the second one is to the west of the park where we've been stockpiling the, it's about ten thousand cubic yards of material that we pulled out of the building and it was all the material that was usable film. That material we want to reuse in the softball and baseball fields. So there's four fields out there that we are looking at renovating. As you know, they have severe drainage problems and it's quite dangerous. Actually, we have a number of people who have, particularly the youth who've hurt themselves. And I think anyone who's played out there probably has a story of almost rolling their ankle or something close. So the drainage has been bad since the beginning of this project that I started three years ago. And actually, back in two thousand and sixteen, a study was done on on what to do for the drainage. So we. uh, on what to do for the drainage. So we would be doing essentially the first phase of that, of the drainage and safety improvements on the fields um, and working with the local advocacy groups. Um, that project, there's not a great deal of design that's needed, um, at this point. And, um, if we, or not if, when you go with the Land Water Conservation Fund, um, you can't start any engineering design if you need it. You can't start that until you are awarded the fund. Um, and so we are doing what we can now with our team and with the, um, advocates behind the scenes. And, um, then the intent is to do the work next year. Um, and then the third one is with the remaining fill material, we would be building the, um, bike pump track. Um, the bike pump track, it is, it does have the word bike in there. And when the twenty twenty master plan was adopted, um, that, that was the terminology. We now refer to it as an all-wheeled pump track and it would be an asphalt surface. So similar to the skate park, on any given day, you see all-wheeled users out there, um, very similar concept where anyone, uh, with a wheeled, uh, device can use, um, the pump track and, um, associated landscaping. So the idea is that we would landscape um, around it and it would actually double as a great viewing area for the softball fields and baseball fields. So, um, and with that, we would essentially be wrapping up Traverse Park. Um, thank you. We'd be wrapping up Traverse Park and we would be, um, completely done with everything by the fall of next year. Um, so that's, that's it. There's not a lot going on, but, uh, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I just want to voice my desire to reallocate these funds to other projects. Um, yeah, I feel like we've already got a big tennis facility here. We've already got bike and all-wheeled facilities at this location. Um, there is funding that was designated for other projects that got sucked into this project already. I drove by the, uh, proposed non-motorized boat launch. I think that was a great idea, uh, for an underutilized piece of property that the city owns. Um, I'm also concerned that the more traffic we drive to this location, the more we're going to need parking. And like I said, we have a parking lot uh, next to a proposed non-motorized boat launch. I'm not saying that has to be the exact project, just giving it as an example of something that, um, you know, we have quite a few projects in this master plan, uh, that have been identified and I'd like us to consider other projects.
Thanks, Councilman Trevor. Um, you know, I think, you know, one, we don't know if we're going to get that land water conservation grant. Um, so for the purposes of the budgeting, um, staff has looked at opportunities, likely funding matches, um, or if we get the most match for the dollars that we're going to put as a, a put down. So, um, inevitably, you know, if something goes off the, the, the track, um, you know, I think all those projects are possible, um, that you mentioned as well as others, um, that there's no shortage of projects in Maeve's head or Jason's head. Um, so I think it's just a matter of finding out, maybe sitting down, uh, the three of you to look at other projects that you think are a good idea and uh, looking at opportunities and maybe, uh, manipulating the budget to put more money or different areas. Uh, that's sort of what the next couple of weeks is for, for you to digest this, come up with some ideas and comments, questions, recommendations.
Great, thanks.
Yeah. All right. Any other council questions on, uh, Parks, um, master plan improvements? Thank you, Jason and Maeve.
I think the last, um, is, but not least is Gavin, yes. The project for the air compressor for fire. I'd be to wrap up the rest of those.
You guys don't mind, I'm going to stand. It's a little back there. Um, yeah, we're proposing, we were looking for a, uh, a couple, two or three years ago, I think our air compressor for SCBA's, um, our breathing air for, um, IDLH atmospheres, um, inside of houses that are burning. Um, it, it, it went down and they just never got it repaired. We were still in the Silkirk system and had a couple of other options. Um, I think it's time that we got our own. None of the ones that we still have access to use those, but none of those are big enough to fill the cascade system, which is our mobile air supply unit on, uh, on our engine eleven thirty-two. Um, they're just not built, they're not big enough to handle that kind of volume. Um, and I know that we had, I think when that, when old one that we had, we kind of shared that one with the sheriff's department with their dive team. Um, I don't know, I don't know if that had anything to do with it going down, but, um, we went through and we priced out some that we think would work. Um, they're about, about a hundred thousand dollars installed. Uh, my plan is we have, um, several grant opportunities that hit at the first of the year. So we're getting all the narratives done right now for those to, to put those in. I think the biggest, uh, one that we have probably the best chance of getting is assistance to firefighters grant. And that one usually our match is anywhere from ten to twenty percent, depending on what it is that year. Um, so hopefully we'll be able to get, uh, this one and not have to come out of pocket for the whole hundred thousand. You know, we're, we're trying to get it down to like ten or twenty. So, um, if we don't get that grant, then we will, um, my, my recommendation is going to be to maybe scale that compressor back a little bit and just kind of rethink it. Uh, maybe, maybe by then there's another option available. So we're just, you know, trying to keep the doors open, but try to maintain fiscal responsibility as it, as it happens, so.
Chief, um, I, I observed during the fire, so your, your, your apparati that go out, uh, to fight a fire, you have compressed air on those. So the tanks empty out, you can refill them right there on the truck.
We have spare cylinders on those, but one of the trucks have, uh, have the very large DOT cylinders on it. Um, we keep those full. So if we need to fill them when we're out there on the scene, that one, we didn't get, uh, too much out of that one because it wasn't long into that fire where we went, uh, into a defensive attack. So nobody was going in the buildings anymore. So, um, or in that building anymore. But it, on house fires in particular, we're in and out and it's not uncommon for our folks to go through anywhere from four to six cylinders in one fire. Um, so it's, you know, we go through that air pretty quick. Um, they're, they're amazing, but they, they, they use a lot of air. So, um, that's, that's just one of our things. We like to keep that one full. Our plan right now is we don't fill that compressor here anymore. We're working it out where we, we would have to take, uh, not that compressor, that cascade system. We'd have to actually take that south, probably to Cootney or Northern Lakes Fire Department to fill it because that's, uh, that's the only one that's got a compressor big enough to handle it.
Thanks. Any questions in the council, uh, for Fire Chief? Does the council have any additional, uh, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
There is another project that I saw, um, utilizing water funds in the Sand Creek watershed. Um, and it was kind of nondescript, just saying, uh, focusing on projects in the timber management plan and the watershed cred watershed management plan.
Yeah.
Um, and I noticed that it had all of that fund allocated towards those projects and none towards a land acquisition. And I would like to, for the city to consider, um, land acquisition for, you know, maybe landlocked parcels in the watershed that we don't currently own.
Sure, sure. Um, uh, obviously any, we can't increase the budget at this point. Um, we have to adopt it at the maximum. Um, but I think there, it's super valid question and I think we can look at trading land. We could do other things. The state has a block. Um, they've expressed some interest in Baldi. Um, but, um, I, I think it would be great to sit down and understand sort of your path on that and where your priorities would be and we can try to make it happen.
So if we were to adopt this budget, um, could those funds be transferred around or would it have to go towards those projects?
Well, I think at the scale that you're talking about for land acquisition, we'd need probably more money in the budget. Um, but, um, uh, you know, keep in mind all council members that you're, you're adopting and you're giving the mayor budget authority based on these bottom line, line items. Um, if projects crumple or there's barriers, um, uh, sometimes those dollars get pivoted, um, anything over seventy-five thousand, obviously, uh, you, you need to approve. Um, but, um, you know, throughout this budget process, you're adopting the maximum potential budget tonight and we're setting a, um, a hearing and adopting it and then, um, you know, land acquisition obviously is expensive, so we probably need another big slug.
Is there additional money in the water fund that is not being utilized in this budget at this point?
For the watershed, there are, there is a reserve in there right now. So there is potential for a, for a purchase of something.
And if we wanted to use that this fiscal year, we would have to put it in this budget right now.
Yep.
So that it would be part of this maximum budget.
That's my understanding. Is that correct, Sarah?
It, it is, or you could, I mean, there's other options. You could also look at this throughout this next year and then put it in the next year fiscal budget. I mean, uh, unless it's an urgent matter, um. Yeah, I mean.
Land acquisition would likely take more than a year anyway.
And that's what I, yeah, I guess I were, that's where I'm going.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, we also need to be careful with the dollars in the water fund. They're not all there just for land purchase. We have to take care of our water system and our water treatment plant and a lot of those other things. And that's kind of what that fund is mainly designed for, so.
Well, and, and we need to, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, we've got the watershed fund and then we have the water fund. The water fund is, uh, we're obliged in the water fund to maintain our infrastructure for our, our users.
Yes, we have the water capital reserves and we have watershed reserves.
So I think what you're talking about is a watershed.
So he's not talking about the water funds.
No, this would have to be out of there.
I was confused by your answer.
Yes, yes.
I was like, we don't want to be spending those funds on land.
Yeah.
No, and there's a lot more analysis that would have to go into that, you know, before we, we would, how much is it going to cost? Do we even have that in there? Are we going to do any timber sales? Because timber sales is what funds that watershed reserve.
What parcels would be interesting, you know, strategic, et cetera. Uh, on that note, um, I know it's a little off topic. I should have done in my updates. Um, Bonner, the, the owners of Schweitzer and some other property owners up there are seeking a zone change and comp plan change. Uh, we need to get our comments to them um, by, uh, before the next council meeting. Uh, we've had staff put together, um, a review of everything, um, that would be concerning to us happening in the watershed. It's basically, it's, it's thousands of acres. They're, they're applying for a comp plan and zone change up at Schweitzer and all the way down to almost ninety-five up by, um, Selly. Um, but there are a couple of parcels on the crest in our watershed. So I'll, I'll send you the, the write-up and ask for your opinion. But I've asked staff to look at forever chemicals, signage, everything we want to ask the county to impart on Schweitzer and the developers up there because they will be likely developing in our watershed, um, if this goes through at, at pretty high density. So.
My understanding is that it's already zoned so that they can.
No, it's Ag Forest.
Even on the, the crest there, because it's already platted with lots.
Yeah, but, and maybe Jason can bring, bring us up to speed. My, my reading of it was it's a request to change it to Alpine Village. There's a PUD that was approved, but the zone change hasn't, uh, occurred to mirror the PUD that was approved way back.
I think, I think there's actually mixed, there's mixed zoning up there. There is some Alpine Village zoning surrounded by Ag Forest Ten. They're trying to bring all of the remaining Ag Forest Ten zone into the Alpine Village designation so that, I'm sorry, I just put a breath in my tin, so that they could pursue potential development on their property in the future. So something like five thousand of the seven thousand acres is already rezoned or already zoned Alpine Villages. They're trying to bring that additional two thousand acres into Alpine Village.
My, my, yeah, my point to bring this up is, uh, we are actively looking at, uh, every concern we would have from the EPA to chemicals, to shooting, to lead, to dogs, to sewer lines. What do we need to tell the county? Uh, they need to impart on the developers, um, if this zone change goes through. So I'll circulate that to you. I expect to have it, um, by the end of next week.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can hope that we stay on topic of budget.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
I can't tell if Zach was giving us the eagle eye, but, um.
Should have happened in my updates.
Yes, yes, please. And I'll look forward to seeing that and many more updates. Um, but if we can stay on topic.
Yes. Okay, um, so, uh, as we stated at the top of the agenda, uh, public comment will not be taken this evening, but will be reserved for the public hearing on the budget scheduled for August twenty-first. Uh, I would entertain a motion for the city council.
Yes.
Did you have some comments or questions?
Negative.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for the city council to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five preliminary budget, declare intent to use foregone levy authority and schedule the annual budget public hearing for August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. This will be a roll call vote. Oh, I need a motion, I guess.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, move my rule second by Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
The final item on this evening's agenda is a view of city fees and the council will schedule a public hearing to consider proposed new fees and existing fees proposed increased by more than five percent. Uh, is that you, Sarah?
Yes, it would be. Um, all right, I'll make this brief. Um, the, the item in front of you is, uh, annual, the, um, fee schedule that we put out, um, every year and it, um, it looks the same as before. Things are highlighted in red for all the changes. Um, and um, then, um, on this staff report basically has things that are new fees and then also the, um, items that are over um, greater than five percent. And all these things will be the ones that need to go to and public, public, go, um, have a public hearing. And then, um, so tonight you'll be, um, a, or can't even think anymore. You will be setting a public hearing tonight. Um, um, we will have Jason quickly come up and talk about the, um, the facility, the Traverse facility, um, James Russell facility, but I wanted to point out a few things as he's coming up. Um, we do have a few new fees on here of the animal impound fee of fire standby services and water install materials. Um, new, a few new fees, so not a whole lot. Um, and then also proposed, um, great fees greater than five percent are the development impact fees. Um, this has not been increased, um, since two thousand and eleven. Um, per our city code, we are able to do it. So, um, we, since we have not adopted, or since we have not increased since two thousand and eleven, technically the, um, the amount of increase could be twen- ninety-one percent. We decided to only propose a three-year, um, of, of, of increase as a thirty-five percent is three years of, um, that Seattle construction material rate. Um, not the full amount, knowing that we're going to be coming with a impact fee study soon, um, and, uh, having that before you, that will actually, um, have the, um, grades that are most likely even higher than that.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a couple of questions if you're.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so, um, the detail on changing the engineering to a flat rate, because I remember changing a lot of these different fees a few few years ago because we were not actually charging for the true costs. Um, and I just, I'm weary of recreating this situation, um, to the developer's advantage where we're not actually charging for all those fees by going through a flat rate. So can you maybe clarify that a little bit?
This was, um, initially when we, um, created a lot of these engineering fees with back when, um, Amanda and Dan were here. Um, and they, that's what they had suggested. Um, we're talking with Brendan is that we have come up with the average amount of time it takes to do one of these and that's from his standpoint and from his tracking, it's, um, and they, and he can speak to this more and maybe this would be discussion that we have him, um, talk at the public hearing as well.
Okay, we can hold it for that. I just wanted to point that out. And then the other ques- question on one of the fees, which wasn't, I don't even think it's a new fee. It was the city electric usage for the special events. And there was no unit attached to that. And so I wanted a little more detail in that.
So that was something that Melissa and I need to circle back on. And then we're going to, at the public hearing, also, um, have an amended amount or amended fee schedule.
Okay, great.
On the actual units, yep.
So, uh, unless there's other council questions, uh, one of the new fees, obviously the new facility, the James D Russell facility, um, uh, Jason's working hard with the consultant and his team to come up with a management plan, staffing and, uh, fees. Uh, it's a bit of a, uh, work of art, uh, not a science at this point because we need to get the revenue and the anticipated expenditures in there. Um, so, uh, Eric, thank you for reporting on that, um, uh, from the B, but, um, one of the things that was reported is that it was forty-five. But, um, one of the things that was reported is that it was forty-five dollars, uh, membership. So there's many different levels of membership and hourly usage that Jason's working on. And he'll tell us about that, um, right, right now.
Thanks. Um, yeah, thanks everybody for being here so late tonight. Um, just a, a little bit of background, the, the reason that a fee schedule is needed for the James E. Russell building. Uh, just like any parks facilities, this facility has to pay for itself. We use no general fund dollars to maintain any of our parks facilities, including all the maintenance at City Beach. Uh, the festival, or sorry, the, uh, the Memorial Field where the festival is held. All of those facilities are maintained using, uh, usage fees for those facilities. We, we charge mortgage, we should, we have an RV park that helps pay for maintenance at City Beach. And of course we allow the festival to take place at Memorial Field. And, you know, this time of year, five days a week, there's baseball going on. Every one of those baseball games is earning revenue hundreds of dollars for the city. When tournaments are hosted at Memorial Field, we charge tournament fees. Uh, a weekend tournament Memorial Field would cost the organization hosting that tournament, whether, whether it's Legion or Little League or the softball league, it would cost them, you know, upwards of a thousand dollars or so for the, for the use of that facility. So just like all of our parks facilities, this facility has to pay for itself. We cannot use general fund dollars to maintain or to operate James E. Russell. So with that, we started with, um, actually costs of operation, our expenses, our estimated expenses. Um, given the, the staffing requirements to operate the building at the times that we ex, that we desire to have it open. And, um, we, we expect total salaries for this building to run upwards of around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that would include a building supervisor plus several part-time staff who would be able to come in, open it in the morning, close it in the evenings. We would have overlap times for custodial, um, duties such as sweeping the floors, which needs to be done almost daily, maintaining the indoor restroom facilities and other, uh, building maintenance and custodial duties. So just labor is around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to, to, to operate this building each year. When you add in all the additional costs, including utilities and a set aside for eventual replacement of the fabric exterior, this is almost identical to what we do at Memorial Field. Every year we set aside. Sarah, how many dollars for turf replacement?
It, it varies every year because it's based on the amount of revenue we bring in, but it's around sixty-five thousand.
Per year? Okay, we're doing not that much, but we, we, we plan to set aside, uh, around twenty-five thousand a year for eventual replacement of the exterior fabric on this building, which has twenty-five year, five-year replacement. We expect it need to be replaced in about thirty-two years. So we're looking at this as a generational facility. We want to sustain it over generations for standpoint residents. So we need to cover all those costs. So all those costs come out to around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So that's the revenue needs. We need to break even on this building or else we won't be able to operate it at a level that we desire to, to serve the users in the community. So with that, we worked with our partners in the, in the tennis and pickleball communities. Um, we have talked to other user groups as I've, as I've indicated to you before, including, uh, field sports users. We don't have any, uh, plans to roll out alternative. The primary use this year will be the, the focus, uh, because we need to give that community the opportunity to fully use this building and, uh, show that it, it, it has the value that we've been, um, that the members of that community have said that it will have for them. So, uh, we've, we've had a lot of meetings with the tennis and pickleball communities. We have brought on a consultant who is a, uh, actually a general manager of a large, uh, s- similar facility over in the Seattle area. And we've, uh, come up with some guiding principles for operations of this building. And I, I don't have an operations plan to show you tonight, but I will just introduce those three guiding principles. Uh, number one fiscal sustainability, it needs to pay for itself. We know that. This, this was a gift from the Russell family, um, but it, it, it did not come with millions of dollars to operate it over its lifespan. It came with millions of dollars to build it. We always knew that was going to be the case. Two is free, free for kids. It needs to be free for kids under the age of eighteen. So our fee structure reflects that. Uh, actually kids eighteen and under, we figured there's a lot of high school seniors who we don't want to, you know, treat as adults. So we want to have, um, free for kids under the eighteen and then opportunities for free community play is our third guiding principle. So we have in our preliminary operating schedule, two hours per day that rotates throughout the week of free community play for anybody, uh, any standpoint resident to come and no membership needed, just drop in, you can come, grab a court, first come, first served. We basically treat it like any tennis court in this, in the city. Uh, so those are the three guiding principles. With that, we had to come up with a fee schedule. Um, it's in front of you here. I'd be happy to sit down with any of you and talk about each of these. When, when, when Sarah said you need a fee schedule for next Wednesday's meeting, I thought, oh, easy, we need like two numbers for council. But as soon as you start diving into these fee schedules, I mean, look at the fee schedule for Memorial Field, it's just as long as this one. It's got different types of user groups. It's got different amounts of time, whether you're going to reserve a single field or all the fields. There's so much to think about. So, um, we spent the better part of last week in the, uh, and early this week, fine tuning this fee schedule with our consultant, talking to our partners. I've shared this with the members of the boards of the pickleball club and the tennis association in town. I am telling you, not everybody loves it, um, but we have some time to fine tune it over the next two or three weeks. So we are back in meetings next Tuesday morning with our consultant and representatives from both of those communities to go over this and see if there's some adjustments. The one non-negotiable is that we need to have a fee schedule that covers the cost of operation. So it's, it's, it's very complicated. There's a lot of different options, but, um, we have opportunities for kids to, to join for free and for seniors to join for free. Um, but we do need members of the community to help cover. And the way I look at it, I, I think, I believe this facility is going to provide immense value to those who, who's, you know, for whom racket sports are a big part of their life. And they are going to be excited to have the opportunity to play here. And, and when, when great value is extracted from a facility like this, they're going to be willing to, to help pay for its operations. So again, sustained fiscal sustainability, free play for kids, that's in this fee schedule. Free, free play for seniors who have the, it's called the Silver, this was a suggestion from Katie Bradbury. She's managed rec facilities around the country. Um, there's a program called Silver Sneakers that anybody over the age of sixty-five can apply for. And then that would, um, basically Medicare would help subsidize their membership costs. So we are going to encourage all our senior, uh, community members to get free memberships for this facility through the Silver Sneakers program. And then, um, free community play time, we're calling that community court time. Every day it'll rotate between eight AM and in the evening, sometimes in the middle of the day, we want to give everybody the opportunity to come, just drop in, play for free. And, you know, hopefully de- decide that they want to join, you know, that would be, you know, your opportunity to come, experience this world-class facility and then say, oh my gosh, this is really valuable. I'd, I'd be happy to pay a few hundred bucks a year to play tennis or pickleball here. So.
Super impressive, Jason. Thank you. Any questions for Jason?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, quick question about that silver sneakers. He said Medicare would help subsidize it. Does that mean that we would get money from Medicare?
I believe so.
Okay.
Um, Katie Bradbury could answer that. She's not obviously here tonight, but she threw that in here, like, we got to do this. Give seniors a chance to, you know, get free memberships. I, I, I think they have to, once you're eligible, I think you can apply to like one health club or sports facility. So there are a lot of s- silver sneakers members who use their silver sneakers for the YMCA right now in standpoint. From what I understand, they probably wouldn't then also be able to join James E. Russell directly across the street. But I think a lot of people who are probably playing tennis and pickleball are over the age of sixty-five. And this might encourage them to just go get that silver sneakers card so that they can use it to, to join James E. Russell. And I, I do have to say, we are not in that program yet. That's something that we, we want to become a part of by the time we open this November.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Council have any additional questions regarding the fees?
Mr. Mayor, if, if the funding doesn't work like you want it to, has there been any talk of like support from the tennis association, from the pickleball association volunteers to staff or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I joined the STA on Monday night this week and that, that was one of their first questions. What can we do to fundraise for this facility? What if we, what if we rallied volunteers? Could we perhaps provide more opportunities for free or reduced play fees if volunteers can staff the building for, you know, or help out with custodial duties? Maybe not staff the building, but come in and do some of the duties that we might otherwise be paying people to do. So, yeah, we definitely want to partner. I mean, I'm all about community partnerships. That's how I got here. I want to partner with STA, with the Bondra Pickleball Club, um, and other groups in the community, high school tennis, middle school tennis. Those are all going to be partners in this facility.
Any other additional questions from council?
I have a lot of questions about the fee schedule. Is this, um, the appropriate time for them or?
Well, we're going to be holding a hearing on August twenty-first between now and then. Um, uh, certainly we're all available to answer questions. Um, uh, I leave it at your discretion right now, but.
I, I will say I'm available to sit down and go over it too.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and me too, I too. And then I can also direct you if we need to go talk to somebody else or someone else within the organization.
So I guess the question is, what is adopting this tonight do?
So all we're doing tonight is we're.
Oh, we're just setting. Okay.
Yep.
Yep. And, and I, I, I've confirmed this with Sarah. We will, I, I will be working on this with the user groups in the next two weeks. And I guarantee you, the one that comes to you is going to be slightly different in some areas because this was admittedly a little bit rushed. Um, I was hoping to have had a building supervisor on staff like a month ago that could have done this in partnership with our consultant. This was me and Katie and Johan and a, a very small representation from the user community. But we are still engaging with them on refining this. We want, we want, we want everybody to be excited about joining and supporting this facility when it opens in a few months. So that's why we have to get it right.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Aggressive, Jason. Thank you. Uh, just a reminder, the public comment will not be taken regarding this fees this evening, but will be reserved for the public hearing that will be scheduled for August twenty-first. I will entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four to consider proposed new fees and existing fees proposed to increase by more than five percent. This will be a roll call vote or a motion first.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Schreiber. Um, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Um, thank you so much, um, Councilman Spiro for joining us for this lengthy meeting. Uh, with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned at nine forty PM.
Thank you all for your patience.